We'd like to call to order the Malibu Planning Commission meeting, regular meeting for June 3, 2024. This meeting is being held both in a hybrid format and that allows members of the public to participate or in person or remotely on Zoom. In-person participations, if you would like to speak, please submit a speaker slip form to the clerk before the item is called. Only a person, only in-person participates may donate minutes to others for their time. Remote participants, if you wish to speak, please please join the Zoom meeting, print on the agenda, and raise your hand when the item is you wish to speak on is called. Commissioners, when you have comments, please raise your hand, and I will call on you when it is turned so we can make our discussion clear and for the public. May I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Pete?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
I am here.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Here.
Chair Mazza?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay, we have a quorum. Drew, would you like to lead the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda pending whatever you want to pull.
Well, the poll comes on the... Is there some way to sort of survey the crowd and see if there's anybody, a lot of people for one thing or another? Or how do you want to?
I would like to make a motion to approve the agenda as is.
As is?
And I'd like to give a friendly amendment to move item 5A after 5D.
Can you say what those are?
5A is, 5A is the item on Cuthbert, as I remember. And 5D is the tower.
5D is actually the conditional use permit?
5D is the market, yes. And the reason I wanted to get the tower in is we early, as obviously we're going to have a long meeting, and we have government officials here on the payroll.
Okay, so Chair, just for the record, the item I think that you would like to move is item 5C. Is that correct? Which is the Civic Center, LA County Sheriff's? It's not 5D.
No, I want to have 5A moved to the end.
So you want to move 5A to the end of the meeting? If we want to hear from all of those first, why don't we just move 5C to the, before all of those? Before anything?
Okay, well, the other, the other reason was, I assume, I assume 5, I assume that Cuthbert is a continuing, or is a hearing?
It's not, it's a new application.
Well, is it? Because I don't, it doesn't seem to be presented that way. And as I remember, our last hearing was a continuance to answer questions.
At the last meeting, the, there was a continuance for staff to bring back a resolution for denial. The applicant withdrew that application and submitted a new application. This one is a different, it's a house on the same property and all, but it is a new CDP application before this commission.
It actually has changes in it from the last.
It is, it is a new application, whether or not the changes are, you know, satisfactory to the planning commission is, is up for you all tonight.
Separate question.
Correct.
John, are you okay with just moving 5C ahead of those items, which is the, the tower?
Sure.
Okay.
I guess, I will come to the.
We'll move item 5C to after consent. Do I have a second?
I second.
And are you, did you want to pull anything on consent?
Yes, I want to pull item 3B4.
And we're going to pull item, we're going to do that when we get there.
That'll be a separate mention.
That's fine.
And then can I just clarify that your intent is as recommended by staff, so we would be continuing item number 5B to the August 19, 2024 Regular Planning Commission meeting and continuing item number 3D3 to a date uncertain?
Yes.
Do you have a microphone, Rebecca? I'm not hearing you. I hope I'm not suddenly deaf.
I do have a microphone. Are you hearing me better when I'm closer?
Barely.
Is the audience having any trouble hearing right now?
That's better.
Okay. I will roll closer. Okay, so.
And then, and then, can you repeat? 5C comes before?
And hearing item number 5C prior to item number 5A.
Okay.
Okay. And then Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Leonard?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Sure, yes.
Commissioner Smith? Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
They're all important tonight.
Do we have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted, May 28, 2024.
Okay, there are no ceremonial presentations, so we will have written and oral communications with the public first. That's item 2A. You must turn in a speaker slip to speak on that, on items that are not on the agenda. Do we have any speaker slips?
We do not have any speaker slips for item number 2A. And looking at the virtual meeting, I do not currently have any raised hands for item number 2A.
Okay, last call. Okay, we're now on to planning commissioners' comments. Any comments?
Yeah.
Drew? And then Skylar.
At the last city council meeting, Councilmember Stewart brought up Resolution 98-083, and I just wanted to reiterate how important it is for all the members of commissions and councils that we do honor decorum. And that's all I wanted to say.
Skylar?
I just wanted to, for those of you that are familiar, the Caltrans has been doing some work on the highway. We're grateful for some of the safety improvements with that. They put some, some medians up in certain areas, some paddles. And there were some paddles in the area where I live, at Port's Head and PCH, and they were tall, and you couldn't see when you were pulling out in either direction. And they were super responsive, got on it right away, shortened them, pulled them back, made the intersection a lot safer. And I just wanted to thank particularly our public works staff for dealing and addressing that in a very timely manner. And another comment that was also made to them was that the possibility of requiring the usage of headlights on Canaan. I don't know that many of you drive Canaan a lot, but oftentimes during this time of the year when we get a lot of fog, it's very dangerous. And coincidentally, the other morning, I was passing over the Canaan, Canaan Doom Road with, behind Commissioner Smith here, and we experienced it together. So I had a brief conversation with him about that. And I just wanted to say that I did follow up to our public's work staff about that, and they're going to be trying to address that.
Are you following him? Never mind.
You have a comment?
Yeah, a couple things. Let's see, I heard that Topanga Canyon is now open. I'd like some confirmation from somebody who actually knows for sure. I see some hands going up. And is this permanent? Or is this just, oh, we're going to do it for a week and then close it up again? Or, okay.
According to them, it's.
Okay, all right.
Permanently open and intermittent one lane in each direction, depending, depending on debris removal.
Good. And I wanted to say, just say, since I seem to be that guy now, I, on the way here, I was almost hit by a large trailer truck on the highway, and I just got my phone out in time just to see it go by. But I don't think I got his license plate. So yet another truck on the highway, and I'm not out on the highway that often. So, and then finally, Bill Sampson made a comment that he had been muted with nine seconds remaining at a recent meeting. And I just wanted to say that, whatever the truth of that is, I don't know, but that the call to mute somebody should be the chair's call. It shouldn't necessarily be a staff reflexive thing, right? So that's, that's John's job now. And those are my comments.
Okay. Nobody else? Okay. I agree with the, trying to follow the decorum, and that includes nobody asks or speaks without recognition from the chair. Now, there's another mention, I should say, that we also have had occasions where audience members have accosted staff members and other people in the parking lot and in the hallways. And that can lead to dangerous situations. Years ago, we used to have a sheriff come to our meetings, and I sure hope we don't have to do it again. But please respect when we say don't talk to people. When a hearing is paused and don't harass people just because they work here or they're on the other side. You can do that off of city grounds if you want to harass somebody, but I'm not recommending that. You might get punched. Now, this will come a little bit later, but after, Richard, when you, when you give your report, would you just let us know how the compliance is working on the weekend and if the phone number is, refers people? I had a case this weekend where several people were doing construction without permission, let's say, and.
Oh, my God, that never happens.
That never happens. But this weekend, our compliance staff was there, and they're red tagged. So watch the cement trucks on the weekend and the ficus bushes. Now, I had a question of the city attorney. I assume this is a good time to ask it. And that is, we now have the FPPC investigating three council members and two, actually, and one ex-planning commissioner and two planning commissioners. And I wondered how that affects our hearing hearings. Does it, do we need to notify applicants that, you know, what do we need to do about that?
So, Mr. Chair, you are correct. The city did receive correspondence from the FPPC in response to a complaint. However, in that correspondence, it was crystal clear that no findings had been made. We have discussed this topic in previous meetings beforehand. I'm going to rely upon those comments and say that nothing needs to be done in light of no findings or no further correspondence from the FPPC.
Okay, but my question is, if we approve a, a item, and then there's a finding made later that there was bias or something, does that put that item in question? And do we need to notify anybody of that?
So, Mr. Chair, our office obviously took the original complaint very seriously. If we thought that the city would be at risk or that any of the decisions would be potentially challengeable, based off of that item and that item alone, we would have corresponded and worked with the aforementioned, at least from my, my chair, planning commissioners. As I said, we've gone over this issue before. There's no further notification necessary. The FPPC has made no findings. They have explicitly said the fact that they have decided to continue to look into this does not mean that there has been any bias or that there are any issues. And until we hear back from them, we should proceed as, as, as we have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. The other thing, the answer to your question on Topanga is it is open. They plan on closing it one lane at periodic times to change things if they have to. And so is the Porto, the one down by.
Porto Marina.
Porto Marina slide. They moved the lane over like they did to the one by the Ballard Bay Club. And they are going to attempt to fix that slide, but it's a 50-year slide. It's been moving since I moved here. Okey dokey. That was it. Okay, Richard, comments by the, oh, I would also like to say that the planning commission and I received their report, their staff reports on last Wednesday night, evening. So it's really hard for us to get through all these letters and all this documentation Thursday and Friday and to be here ready to roll on Monday.
Clarification, it was Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, okay. It's still really hard. And so I think that, in fairness to the applicant, we need to, I would propose, and this is just a suggestion, that we take a week moratorium sometime and get a week ahead and give us an extra week to go over these things. And it would be, I think, much more efficient, a lot less questions can be answered, a lot more questions can be answered before the meeting by staff, and we can move things along quicker by just taking a skip or a hop or something on a three-week, three-week break. But anyway, Richard, you're on.
Thank you very much, Chair. To start with the questions posed by the, the commission tonight, if somebody uses the One Call to City Hall number that is on our website, that sends both an email and a text to the code enforcement manager and myself. So that system is working, and not everyone uses it, but it, it is a, a good way to get ahold of us. Nevertheless, if someone either calls the City Hall, the general information line, and leaves a message for code enforcement, that is getting checked as well on weekends by the code enforcement manager. And also, in terms of the question of weekend activity, you are correct, Chair, this, this weekend, we did issue a stop work order for some hedges. We are going to be having at least one weekend day. We'll be in, we will not keep it to be always the same day, but at least one weekend day for the next two months, we will be in the city with a code enforcement person. And then also, if something happens on the day that we're not here, we, of course, will try to get someone in the city if we can. If not, we'll follow up on Monday. But we are in the city on the weekends. And I also wanted to report that the Tranqus Shopping Center did hold an event pursuant to the conditional use permit on Friday evening. There was a volunteer on patrol present, and the report that I received from our VOP was that the attendance was in keeping with what the commission approved. And also, they confirmed that at nine o'clock, it, all the music, the noise, everything ceased, and everyone dispersed on time, and it didn't run over. And so we'll continue to see that there is someone on site for those events this summer, and we can continue to provide any updates if the commission would like. And that concludes my report for this week. Thank you.
A question. What, can you give us the number that's the One Call handles all or whatever it is? And, and when they call in, does it, does it say what that number is, or they just leave a message? If somebody just dialed 456-CITY, they just get the standard message, or does it say, call one call also?
I was hoping to find it on our website, to be honest. I have not used it. So I'd be glad to look at that and get you an answer. I have not used it.
Okay. And then on the inspection for the Sunday night, was there traffic monitors for the parking lot? And were there adequate sanitary facilities?
According to the report that I received from our VOP, yes.
Thank you.
I can verify that also. They, the center had lots of employees out guiding traffic, and it looked like a very orderly event.
Great. And everybody was happy. There was a lot of questions on why the event the week before was not held and was moved to another venue, and that was purely permitting timing. It had nothing to do with the planning commission. It had to do with the shopping center and their permitting. So our CUP is now in effect. Okay. What?
One Call to City Hall, 3104562489, extension three.
Oh, there's an extension to it. Okay, we are now on the.
Consent counter.
Consent counter. I'm going to pull 3B4. Anybody else want to pull anything?
I'd like to pull 3B2.
That's it?
Yep.
Do we have a motion for the other two items?
I'll make a motion pulling item 3B4.
Okay. Is that it? I'm going to make a motion then to, to receive items 3B1 and 3B3.
Wait, hang on, hang on. Did we, we pull 3B2?
Two, yeah.
Two and four.
Two and four, got it.
For, for 3B1, it is a resolution, so if we could have a formal motion and vote, roll call vote.
Okay, do I mean, I'll make a separate motion on 3B1. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, now can we have a formal vote?
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, and I'll make a motion to receive item 3B3. Is that, is there a consensus on that?
Sounds like it.
Okay, 3B3 is approved. Okay.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on. Yes, so item 3B3 is just to continue this item to a date uncertain?
Yes.
So it's not approved?
It's not approved.
Continued to, to a date uncertain.
It's continued to a date uncertain, yeah. The recommendation is approved. Okay, we'll get the language right here. Okay, now we are off to.
3B2.
3B2.
Approval of minutes.
Approval of minutes. Do we just have a question, Craig, or?
No, I have several points on this.
Okay.
First, I get for Patrick, help us understand why we still need to be asking staff to do this work when not only do we have the videos of the meetings on YouTube now, but YouTube actually has a transcription that's searchable. And I know, you know, we have to keep legal minutes, but the video is dispositive anyway, as against these sort of shorthand notes. So I, I wonder why, at what point and how do we just say, you know what, we don't necessarily need to ask staff to be doing these things?
Yeah, so Commissioner Hill, you are accurate that in the event of any legal challenge and or anything like that, the transcript governs. Take the video, you get a court reporter to formally transcribe it, and that is what, what, what governs. I may have to enlist the help of Director Malika. Maybe these are a shortened version for someone to look at if they are interested in seeing what happened without necessarily watching the multi-hour meeting.
But my point is, now that YouTube has the transcription and it's searchable, so you can just go, you know, I want to hear about disasters and type in the word and it'll pop you right to the spot.
Yeah, but YouTube is not a government agency.
And yet, the, okay, Rebecca has some clarification.
So we follow the city council's practices as closely as possible with our planning commission record-keeping. And so like the city council, we create action minutes, which give the key essence of each item. item and record the votes without going into detail about the deliberations that take place in between reaching the final decision. And people can use that to identify whether or not they want to view the actual recording of that section of it. The problem with YouTube transcription services is that they are not considered to be legally accurate. They often are inaccurate, and we don't have any control over how well or how poorly they transcribe or whether those transcription services will remain in the long run.
Well, among other things, I'm just trying to save you some work here.
I would love to not do these. Yeah.
Well, because, okay, in that case, then I have to call out a couple of points in the minutes that weren't quite accurate. One is that regarding item 2B of that May 20th meeting that we're reporting on here. So Commissioner Hill questioned whether financial hardship was, can be considered a basis for undue hardship. And my question was, was more, this essence was, was about how extensions work. And given that we will likely experience a lot of undue hardship, should be, we'd be looking at the extensions regime in a different, more nuanced way. So a little bit different there. Secondly, in the next paragraph following that, Commissioner Peake talks about something that sounds like he's talking about extensions, like I just was, but he's actually talking about the Malibu Inn motel. And then for item 3B3 on that date, no disposition of the item was noted? It's just, I think it was just sort of left unfinished on that item?
I'm sorry, what item number was that?
3B3. I don't know if we voted, or I don't remember now what, that was just my note here. And then on 5A, which was the Tranqus events thing, there's some discussion about the noise. And what the minutes reflect was that we put in a condition saying that the sound systems can't exceed 95 decibels, et cetera. My recollection is a little different, and I suppose we might have said that, but just by way of clarification, putting in any kind of restriction on noise level does not obviate, and this is for you, Patrick, does not obviate the municipal ordinance noise standard. So, because to say 95 decibels at the site, if the noise standard is, I think it's, at night, it's 45 decibels five feet outside somebody's house, practically speaking, we're going to be breaking the noise ordinance at people's houses much sooner than we're reaching the 95 at the facility, if that makes sense. Rebecca?
On that particular issue, both the case planners, Samantha and Elias, and I listened to the final section of your discussions multiple times to see what was the last thing that was stated as being part of the approval. And that is what was in the record, based on both her interpretation, or her listening to the recordings as well as myself cross-listening to check her work.
But wait, I'm sorry, but Patrick, this doesn't obviate the ordinance.
That is, that is accurate, Commissioner.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to be clear about that. So with that, I'm ready to accept what 3B2.
Okay, just so you know, I, when I signed the minutes, I went over that with Rebecca, and we, and they listened to the tape, and that's, that's, I concluded, that's what they were doing.
And Chair, since this item was pulled, we do need to see if there's any public comment for 3B2.
Is there any public comment for 3B2?
There are no hands raised in the online meeting. We have not received any speaker slips for the item.
I didn't hear that last sentence.
We have not received any speaker slips for 3B2, and there are no raised hands in the virtual meeting.
Okay. So we don't need to vote on that? Do we have consensus?
We do need a motion to approve. I believe 3B2 does require an approval of the minute, so we would need a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve 3B2.
I'll second.
Commissioner Peake?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, now we're off to 3B4, which I polled. And the reason I polled it is this 3B4, okay? Do we take speakers first? Okay, Don?
I'm sorry. So for 3B4, I think that it would be likely that we would do disclosures prior to speakers, but I will ask Patrick to confirm that.
Correct. So any item polled from the consent calendar should be treated identically to if it was, you know, regularly on the agenda. So disclosures, and then obviously, if the chair would like a modified staff report, that would be the direction, and then open it up to the applicant questions and then deliberations.
Okay. Any disclosures?
I met with Don Schmitz at the site last Friday and walked it. Commissioner Smith was there.
I was with Commissioner Leonard, and we met with Mr. Schmitz. Learned nothing, learned nothing other than what's in the staff report.
I met alone with Mr. Schmitz at the site last Friday and just what's in the staff report, and the people drive very fast on PCH.
I sent an email to Renika asking seven questions. They were technical, I can go through them. Unfortunately, my printer didn't work, so I'll have to do it from memory. They were basically the fact that there are zero depth dimensions on the plants, so you cannot figure out where things are. Number two, the slope analysis did not have a overlay of the project, so you could not tell because you did not know the depth where, where it was. The third thing was the compliance table listed it as setback at 65 feet. The staff report said 95 feet, and you couldn't figure out which was which. There was no landscape plan that I could determine was comprehensive in that it did not list the plants. It listed the plants, but not which ones they were. And.
Wait. They listed the plants, but not which ones they were?
There was a list of plants, but the number of the plant on the plan, there was no key. And then there was a question on, the fence had, the front fence had lateral slats which are not visually, not do no, no longer qualify as visually 90% permeable because you can't see anything if you're at any angle other than 90 degrees. And, Renika, did I forget anything?
I, you know what, I have the email and my responses. If you want me to just run through them all for the record, it's up to you, just so we have clarity.
Sure, why don't you give us a brief, 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 brief summary? And also, the other thing I brought up was, there's no analysis of the hillside ordinance, which you can't tell whether or not it comes in place without knowing the placement of the house. Okay? So before we call Don, we'll have a brief staff report, and then we're off and running.
Okay. I didn't prepare a PowerPoint, but I can run through a brief description of the scope of work, which includes the construction of a new single-family residence. The square footage is 10,620 square feet, which includes the excess area that's located within the basement. The project also includes a new pool, grading decks, and associated development. There was extensive review on the project's compliance with Chapter 4, that's the ESHA Development Standard Chapter, and it was determined that there's no fuel modification that will encroach in the ESHA. And staff was able to determine the project does comply with Chapter 13 to be treated administratively. Accordingly, the planning director has recently approved the CDP. There were several questions that you mentioned earlier. I can run through them now, if you would like, and the answers to those questions. The first question, I'll take my glasses off. The first question was regarding the grading table. And correct, there was a typographical error. The total grading proposed for the project is 6,100 cubic yards. And there was also a typographical error under the safety grading. I basically superimposed two numbers. So rather than the safety grading being 248, it's actually 284. The next question was regarding the site of construction and whether there was development that was on slopes steeper than 4:1. My response to that was that the grading plan, which is included as PDF page 54 of your packet for this item, it includes contours. And the grading plan shows the footprint of the residence doesn't, let me go back, let's see. The footprint of the house doesn't go beyond the 137 contour. And based on a slope analysis, the slopes steeper than 30, excuse me, the slopes steeper than 3:1 occur at the 554 contour line. So again, all the development is at the 330, excuse me, the 137 contour line and south towards PCH. There's no component of the footprint of the house that's on steep slopes. The next question, question number three, was regarding the geo-referral. And they did refer to a three-story structure. This is not a three-story structure. There are several cross-sections through the proposed house that show that there's no portion of the structure that exceeds two stories. Question number four was related to the fencing along the frontage of PCH. And my response was that, and I had literally had a conversation with the owner this afternoon, and he will be providing additional details to ensure that the fencing above 42 inches in height will not be a solid fence when viewed from different angles along PCH. The fifth question was regarding, let's see, oh, yeah, the setbacks. And the setbacks are actually on the site plan, which also serves as the fuel modification plan. That can be found, well, it's provided on sheet A-0.01. I should have given you the actual PDF page, but that graphic is in your packet. The sixth question was related to the landscaping plan. There is a landscaping plan that is attached to the bioapproval for the project that's located on PDF page 64. You did have a follow-up question regarding the plant species, and I agree that the landscape plan isn't in the format that I'm used to seeing them. So I wasn't quite sure if your question and your concern was regarding the height of the landscaping or if it complied with the water conservation ordinance. I'm not sure what the concern is. But there are specific conditions in the notice of decision that do address those concerns. Question number eight was regarding, oh, additional fencing proposed with this application. And there is no other fencing beyond that which is proposed along the frontage on PCH. And with that, I'm available for any questions, any additional questions.
Okay, well, I have a couple of follow-ups.
I have questions. Do we want to hear, want to hear the?
Yeah, we'll hear, we'll. It's a hearing, so we go through it everything, right?
Correct. We would call the applicant up, see any other members.
And before we call the applicant, if anybody else wishes to speak on this, please turn in the slip. Rebecca?
I just want to make the commission aware, we have a technical issue that staff have been trying to address since about 15 minutes before the start of the meeting. We are having difficulty displaying presentations on the side screens in council chambers. I've just asked our staff to clarify with our technical support in the control room whether those slide presentations can be presented in the Zoom meeting, but just not in chambers. I'm not sure what the status of that is just yet. And Don Schmitz did submit a presentation for this item.
I assume that this presentation is the same presentation that we got before. Okay, so we've seen it. If we can't display it, it's not a big deal, I don't think. I will ask you that question when you come up. So we're going onto the hearing. Okay, so we're opening the public hearing, and Mr. Schmitz is going to give us the answers. Oh, you got to turn him on somehow, or?
So to speak.
Yeah, turn him on. Artful choice of, can you turn him on right there?
Can I do it here?
I could self-facilitate. Good evening. What, what?
Does he get 15 minutes?
He does not, no.
I get three minutes. This is a receiving file item. So, and I don't have my PowerPoint, and even though it's a small PowerPoint, I feel a little naked. But you do have the handout. I appreciate you asking the questions for staff to answer. But let me embellish upon those, a couple of those items which you raise. The slope map does in fact have the footprint of the house and the development on it. The grading is in fact under the maximums as promulgated in the LIP. The item was appropriately approved by the planning director under 13.13.1A. It is a clean sheets project. It has absolutely no impact to ESHA. It is not within the appealable jurisdiction to the California Coastal Commission. It's a single-family home that is in strict compliance with all the applicable codes and regulations in the LCP. Also, basically, the only thing that was discretionary was the site plan review. I would draw your attention to, I'd like to draw your attention to it on the screen, but we did an analysis. Staff did require us to show all the homes in that R10 zone. And in fact, not most of them, but all of them have second stories. In fact, there's one that is three stories that predates the city. So there is no neighborhood community concern. In regards to the articulated concern, Chair, that you raised as it pertains to the fencing, I would reaffirm what Ms. Brooks gave you in her testimony, that we are specifically conditioned on that and a great many other things, including the landscaping plan, et cetera, that we have to comport with that. Other issues which you didn't raise, the dark sky ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. It's all in there, and that is the typical type of house cleaning that you do as you move forward with the adoption of the resolution and the processing of the application. So with that, we have the fire department approval, we had the forestry approval. In fact, this particular applicant filed this application in 2018, and it took a while to get here. In fact, it took long enough whereupon the departmental approvals lapsed, which is something that Commissioner Hill has been mindful of. And so staff had us go back and get those departmental approvals updated, which was completed in January of this year. So everybody took a fresh look at it and reapproved the project. So with that, I have very limited time. It's supposed to be that way. This is a receiving file project. It is a clean sheets project. I believe that Renika answered your questions, but if you have any concerns whatsoever about any aspect of that project, I urge you to please call me back, and I'll answer those questions.
Okay, Craig, you have a question?
I have, yeah, some questions. Sort of a threshold question for Patrick. Remind me how the appeal period can start running five days before the commission hearing? It seems to me that either the decision can't be ripe for appeal until we've ratified it by approving the calendar, or conversely, if it's already ripe for appeal, how do we even have jurisdiction to look at it here?
So for, A, CDP, Commissioner Hill, I apologize, I'm not quite sure I followed your question. D, the item before you is a receive and file and a report. In order for you all to take jurisdiction, a majority of the planning commission.
Right.
Must affirmatively vote to then, and at which point the applicant then gets to decide whether or not they would like to proceed with the full CDP or not, so.
And until, until we make that decision one way or the other, it seems like the decision is not. is not yet ripe. It's a receive and file.
I would say that the director's decision is, has been, has been made, albeit you all, as the planning commission, have the ability to pull it up with, once again, an affirmative vote of the majority of you tonight.
And if, just hypothetically, if we did that, that would re-toll the appeal period?
You'd have a hearing.
Correct, no, because then the?
Then we'd have the hearing, okay. All right, okay, next question. The staff reports to, staff report refers to former ESHA on the site. How do you, how do you make former ESHA? What happened there, and how does this?
Is there a page?
That's illegal, that it's still technically legally ESHA.
Is there a page you're referring to in the report? I know the ESHA map does show ESHA north of where the residence is proposed, but as was also described in the notice of decision, the project biologist provided supplemental information, which includes the overlapping fuel modification zones from the adjacent properties, and?
Okay, so fuel zones, it was just kind of loose use of the language. It's still ESHA, but it's in the zone. Rebecca seems to have a?
Chair Mazza, if you wouldn't mind disclosing the public comment period just as a formality?
Right.
Thank you.
And just for the record, we have no one on Zoom. Recall, after the in-person, we always need to go to Rebecca.
And we have, we have no other speaker slips.
No one is on, no speaker slips, no one on Zoom. The public comment period is now ended.
It's ended.
Okay, next question. Sheet A200. If you're following on PDF, that's PDF 51. It looks to me like, I guess I do need clarification here, that it's, there are three stories above grade, where it looks like what's being called the basement still is daylighting there some? I'm looking specifically at the, at the south elevation, like right through here.
Where's the daylight deck?
Well, this, this is a floor, and the ground level is down here, so?
If you look at the, if you look at the cross-section, though, on the other, this would be the opposite side.
That's the opposite side.
Right, so you're not looking out through there. That's being carved out of the earth's surface, and this is cantilevered.
Am I correct, am I correct? We cannot show?
That's that bit out over there.
These elevations.
I'm talking about in here.
For the public to see.
Talking about this right here?
I'm talking about?
Rebecca question?
At this time, we don't have the ability to show things on the side screens. They are still trying to reset.
Okay, you guys, this is a public hearing, so if you want to say things, you've got to say them clearly, so you have to say, on this page, this thing?
I'm sorry, I thought we were?
A200, he's looking at the south elevation, west elevation, north elevation, and east elevation.
So what's your discussion between the two of you?
We were just looking on the chart, and I was pointing to where I thought I'd?
I know, where were you pointing?
He's pointing at the west elevation, looking in the center of the drawing.
South elevation.
I think that's the west.
And you answered your question?
No.
He hasn't answered. I have not answered the question. I tried to answer the question.
Oh, you're right, it is the west elevation.
So he's looking at the west elevation, and the issue is whether or not there's a three-story portion of the structure there because of what looks like a basement or first floor.
So can we ask Renika to explain that?
So, let's see. I'm going to also?
The second elevation on page A200.
Yes, yep, I see it. I'm going to also defer to one of the cross-sections because that actually shows. So if you look at the next page, which includes all of the cross-sections through the structure, the west wing section is probably the best one to depict what you're concerned about. There is no, so the lower level, part of it is basement, but it's not one contiguous floor, I guess, for lack of a better way to describe it. If you look at the right side of the structure, there is a portion of the structure that's visible above grade, right? But in that section of the structure, there's only two stories.
Okay, I see it now, looking with that other section, that clarifies it.
Okay, I'd like to, let me interrupt you for a second. One thing I'd like to, to explain, and we may need Don on this, is nowhere on the plans, on any elevation or any plan, does it have natural grade to show. There's a one spot where it says center of building, natural grade. That's it. And then also on A3.01, it measures the building height, which you can't do from the natural grade because there is none, but it eliminates the parapet in the middle, in all three, all three drawings. So how would the planning commission or any staff member know the actual height of the building?
I can speak to that. I don't think I mentioned that clarifying point in my responses to your questions earlier. You did have that question.
Yes.
And the cross-sections don't include the grades, finished grade, existing grade, natural grade. It doesn't include any of that. The cross-sections, which I think it's the sheets A3-00, are primarily to confirm there's no three-story structure. So if you were to confirm the finished height of the structure, you would go to the elevations, which include all of the grades.
I don't see a single elevation that has a line defined as natural grade, not one.
There, there.
Oh, they aren't. Show me one, tell me which one.
Okay, let me pull up the, on PDF page?
Easy.
Soft down, but I got my microscope out for this one.
Easy.
So, John, the page that you're looking at is A200. You're looking at the cross-section there, the page before that.
I'm looking A301.
So if you, if you look on the elevations there, the bottom drawing has in, which is the east elevation north side, gives you a natural grade at center of building?
Center, center of building is on a slope. Okay, natural grade isn't one spot. It's a slope.
The line is going down. As you can see, it's going from the portion where the grade is higher, and it's, as the building comes down the hill, the line is?
Yeah, but I just want to point out, Commissioner, that it's measured from the, not the center of the building, from the exterior, okay?
And from any point on the grade, anywhere under the project?
So, so?
But that, but that line is basically mimicking where the grade would be?
Unless, if the lot was flat in that portion, it would. But it's on a hill.
It's showing that it's on a hill. Look at the drawing board.
The line is showing at the center of the building, the line is going down. It doesn't say what the exterior of the building, either side is. So if you go laterally across the property, the property has to be totally flat.
Understood, so what you're saying is it doesn't show the dotted line for the existing grade on the other cross-sections?
On any cross-section, that's for the center of the building, not the exterior. Okay? It's impossible to calculate the height from these drawings, impossible.
This is a receive and file, this is not a full-blown hearing yet, you know?
No, 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 let me point something out. This is over if we receive and file. If we pull it, we need to look at the data and see if it follows the LIP and the LCP. I'm pointing out, in this particular case, there's no possible way to know if this building is over 24 feet high.
There's no civil plan that's been drafted yet, though. These architectural drawings still?
No, but we are approving this. It's been approved by the planning director.
Chair, Chair, I gotta interrupt slightly. The planning commission is not approving this item. As Vice Chair said, you either correct, you guys have the, you guys have the prerogative to bring it back as a full item?
That's what I was trying to say.
Got it, you got it.
You can either bring it back or accept it the way it is.
Or receive and file, right?
And so what I'm pointing out is, the planning director approved the property saying it was 24 feet high with no evidence in the record to show that it's 24 feet high.
John, I'm going to disagree with that because I think right here on this, this elevation, he's showing that, he's showing?
He's showing the center of the building.
Correct.
The building is a three, a four, a three-dimensional item. It's got width and depth, okay? And the hill has to be exactly flat for that one line, not two lines on the outside, or four lines, actually.
So what you're saying is that the elevation line should be a jogged line, it shouldn't be a straight line?
It should be?
Following the contour of the grade.
It should be at the wall of the building, not the center of the building.
When he's using the word "flat," he's saying, if it were all in one plane, he's not saying if it were level.
Okay, understood.
Flat, level, okay. So the other point I want to make on this, on these drawings, is if you look at the, where they measure the height, supposedly measure the height, or on A301, the parapet's missing. And the parapet has no dimension, but it's there.
Again, the cross-sections aren't used as the appropriate reference to confirm the height, it's the elevations. So I, I'm looking at the elevations now. Thank goodness for the computer, I could blow it up. I'm on PDF page 51, and it does show the natural grade and the finished grades throughout. I know it's kind of difficult on a PDF or on a printed copy, especially a reduced size.
Did we get it in our, in our, did we get it here?
Yes, it's on PDF page 51.
Well, I don't care, I need the drawing.
A200, or what is that?
Yeah, it's A200, let me get the footer.
Okay, let's take a look at that.
John is right on this one.
A200, it's exactly the same thing, that's what we were looking at, okay? And if you look at the third one down, you have a dimension, it leaves off the whole parapet.
You're looking at the, I'm sorry, you're going back to the cross-section?
I'm going back to A2.00.
Number three, are these looking at?
Chair?
Yes.
Can I call it, Don?
Can you turn on your speaker?
May I call Commissioner Schmitz?
For question only.
Don?
Don, we have one single question.
You have the same printed copy that we have that has A2.00 on it?
Yes, Commissioner, I got it.
Can you direct me to the area where what's being questioned is indicated?
A2.00? Okay, so if you take a look at the cross-sections labeled as the east elevation and the, excuse me, the, yes, the east elevation north side, and the west elevation, the existing grade, and the heights are called out, there's a datum point, and I believe it's A3, A3.00, there is a datum point, essentially a cloud, that?
We don't have that in our packet.
It's, was, was part of the?
We have A3.01 and A200, we're missing A00, A3.00. I'm not saying that it doesn't exist, I'm just saying that I'm not looking at it.
Okay, A104. Our bad. So essentially, the survey was done in CAD, the grading plans and architectural plans were done in CAD. Multiple datum points provided to staff in regards to the height of the house, which a flat roof could be 24 feet. There's one spot, it's just about that, and all the rest is 21 feet.
Okay, thank you. Chair, can I have a, I have a question for Renika?
Can I just ask him, you're talking about A0.04? A1.04.
But that's a plan view, so I don't, I don't see how that helps us.
Yeah, I just want to get on the right page, yeah, that's, that's a roof view.
You just have a site section, if it's A0-04, it just gives you one, like, view line, sight line, but that's not applicable.
Yeah, it's just not there.
May I ask a question for Renika?
Yes, Renika?
Renika, are you, are you comfortable that this, this property meets the 24-foot height line with what you've been provided?
I am.
Okay, thank you.
Renika, can you tell us why you are and what evidence you used?
The multiple plans that we've been using to examine the project, like I mentioned, primarily for, you know, what's before you tonight, the elevations, do you show existing and the natural and finished grades? When y'all got your questions, I looked again, just to make sure. I know there's been multiple iterations of this project, and I am confident that the project complies with the height requirement.
Okay, in your career in the city, have you ever seen a elevation measured from the center of a building instead of from the exterior? As far as height goes?
Chair, did you want to, so we, I'm going to kind of maybe jump in here, and Director Malika may, may want to follow me here. Once again, we are far down the weeds of this project. The, the issues for which you have raised, I am not commenting on the validity of them. I am saying that the appropriate way to handle this item would be then a motion to, if a majority agrees, to bring this back as a full item. Having a hearing in this, in this context during the receive and file?
Okay, well, I, one second. There are other items that I'd like to bring up that are egregious, that may, may sway that vote.
Yeah, he's right. The point is, all we're deciding now is do we have enough or the desire to bring it back?
Let's hear, right now you don't, but let's hear, or not for me, I can't speak for everybody else, but let's hear what else you have, maybe we got?
I have a few observations also.
I just want to bring up one that, to me, that just mind-boggled me. And that is the landscaping plan, okay? If you look at the, what, I couldn't find one, and finally, there's one somewhere in here under the biology report, which I have a question of Richard. By the way, I just want to point out that the slope analysis we got does not have an overlay of the property on it, okay? I, I looked at this with a big magnifying glass. There is no overlay. Let's see, the biology report is, if you could help me find it, it's, you know what page that is, and Renika, it's right somewhere, oh, biology referral, it's attachment two.
PDF page 59.
It's attachment two, and, well, that's, and it's, yeah, let me find that. If you look at that, you will not find a table. You see numbers, and there's numbers in the front, okay?
John, I believe that there's a full table on the second page of that document.
You read the table and try to find out, if you look at the beginning of that, and I don't have it in front of me.
Again, I, I just have to say that if our city biologist was okay with the project, that's his, in his professional capacity, and he signed off on it, then I'm okay with it.
That's the same reasoning, well, I want to point out to you. No, 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 you're not recognized right now, I'm speaking, okay? Then I'll let you speak. The LCP says anything west of Malba Road, Malba Canyon Road, must be considered rural, and all, all public views must be protected, okay? So if you look at that plan, you see trees that look big, okay? You see big round things that are as big as the driveway. So try to find out what those are, and that's this plan here. And if you look at this, if you look at L6, you'll see what is not a table. If you look at this plan, you'll see the trees labeled L, labeled 15, 16, and 19. If you look on here, there is no 15, 16, and 19. So you have to go to, believe me, I spent hours on this, you have to go to the list of the plants that they're ordering, okay? And the only thing you can find on there, there are 26 Holly Lee cherries. And I think they're in 20, 24-inch boxes. They grow to be, yes?
I'm so, so sorry, we are having major technical difficulties, our entire broadcast is down. I think now would be a good time to, to recess.
If we could take a 15-minute recess, they're going to try to reboot the entire system.
I'll tell you what, we'll take, we'll give you 20, we'll give you 7:45.
That's 10. That's 10.
Yeah, hang on, so it's 7...
8:00 p.m.
8:00 p.m. Please, no one discuss this item with any members of the staff, audience, or each other.
If we're taking a 20-minute recess, are we not reconvening at 7:55 p.m.?
We were going to round it off at 8, but if you want, 7:55?
I think let's try for it.
Okay, we'll try 7:55. Now, what point did we lose it?
I just became aware of this, like, the moment before I signaled...
Correct.
Okay, so is there, is there a chance somebody could look on YouTube and see when it shut off, so we can repeat?
Once again, we will handle that during the recess.
Okay. We are recessed, please don't talk to us about this item or any other, well, any of the commissioners.
The captain has turned on the seatbelt sign.
Okay, everybody's sitting down? Wait, wait until eight o'clock?
Okay, where were we?
Wait until eight. We said eight, didn't we? We said seven. I wonder if the clock's working? I don't know if it's working. Oh, well, we're gonna start it. Okay, we're gonna reopen the hearing and we're gonna have an announcement by our city attorney and our...
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So, for the benefit of the commission and the public, the issue is as follows. YouTube is still up and running and broadcasting. What we are having a problem with is the Zoom function, particularly the video component, in that you just kinda see those rainbow bars you can still hear. If you log into Zoom, however, of course, we do not have the ability to see who is raising their hand. Thus, Zoom participation at this point is not feasible. Our agenda is clear that those participating remotely via Zoom do so at their own risk and that it is not legally mandated that we continue or cancel the meeting. However, that is, of course, always your guys' prerogative, should you feel that. And, Mr. Chair, if anyone has any questions, I think before we go on to this other item, we should focus on this first, excuse me, the item on the agenda, focus on the tech issues, and then go from there, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Craig?
Well, yeah, I wonder. I mean, it seems like there could be people relying on participating on Zoom, and I don't recall ever seeing anything that says, "You Zoom at your own risk. You should come to the meeting if you..."
Yep.
It's on the agenda, but...
On the cover of the agenda.
Does anybody else have comments? Okay, I... Do you do? Go ahead.
Craig, I was sort of thinking what exactly what you were thinking, and then having looked at the front of the agenda, that changed my opinion from wanting to stop versus wanting to...
Just keep going.
To move forward.
I... If it were any other meeting, you can see the audience here. I'm sure the audience at home is bigger because of the tower and everything else going on. And to me, it's very important that the public input is input. And the people at home, they don't know what's going on.
They can hear you, Paul.
Next is...
We are live on YouTube right now, and they can hear everything that's going on. It's just they cannot participate. If they really want to, they can run down here.
Well, how would they know that if they were on Zoom?
Chair, Rebecca's got her hand.
Well, Rebecca?
If possible, we might be able to run a quick test. I believe I might be able to see if somebody raises their hand on Zoom, and Lonnie just raised a hand. So, if members of the public who are watching on YouTube want to participate and re-log back into the meeting on Zoom, although they won't have a view, I believe I would be able to unmute and allow public comment from those persons.
Okay, can we unmute Lonnie? Ask her to unmute and see if we can hear. I have no problem if we have participation from the public. If we're cutting out a big portion of our audience, I've got a problem with that. Chair?
Another option might be to look at it. Are there particular ones that we do want to do tonight? And maybe just say, "This one, big one, we'll put that on hold." I'm not sure how we'd break it down, but maybe just the one.
One person's big one and another person's little one, I think.
Chair?
May I ask if Lonnie, if you are able? I've clicked for you to unmute, and also I've clicked that option for Robert Ross, who is one of our city consultants. If either one of you can attempt to speak and see if we're able to hear you, I would appreciate that.
I did unmute. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. It's very difficult, though, to follow the meeting, I have to tell you.
Rebecca, you can go ahead and mute them. So, Chair, obviously, you heard that. I will say, obviously, Zoom, if someone were to log on and see the rainbow bars, that is... Basically, what I'm saying is that Zoom is compromised this evening. If you guys are comfortable with the audio only, that's your guys' prerogative. But this is not a precedent setting that we only move forward if there is a Zoom public comment. Thank you.
Okay, let's take a straw poll, or... Skylar?
I was just gonna add, maybe we want to make the comment to those that are out there on Zoom, knowing that we've had a little bit of an issue with it. If they want to come down to City Hall, are obviously more than welcome to, and they'll have the opportunity to speak.
Okay, let's take a consensus vote.
My consensus is for us to move forward.
Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith?
Move forward.
Move forward. I think that's where we're heading.
Okay, well, I'm gonna air in the... I'm gonna lose, okay? So, we're going to move forward, and we're going to... Reopening the hearing, and we are...
And so, Chair, it's not a public hearing, we're reopening the item.
Yeah, we're reopening the item, okay? Craig?
Yeah, I had a couple of observations heading towards a motion. One is that this roof deck proposed is big. It would held well over 100 people. It's got seating furniture planned for dozens of people. One question I have for Richard, I suppose, is, is there any structural or formal distinction between a residence and an event space? At what point do you... Is it just like you build it as a house and then you make it an event space? Or is there any sort of structural difference? Number of bathrooms required, or I don't know what.
So, if someone were to turn it into an event space, then something like, yes, bathrooms. When we do special event permits, that's something we look at, is the number of restrooms. And oftentimes, folks just have to bring in some form of porta potty. But in terms of how big it is, there is no threshold in our zoning ordinances to where it crosses over to a commercial use? I hope I'm answering your question correctly.
Yeah, I guess there is no, like, really clear black line. Okay, so then, my next thought about that is, and I've raised this before on rooftop decks, there's a privacy concern. It's in the general plan. We've got three or possibly four, depending on your count, houses right next to the property line here that could all be impacted by noise from a roof like this. So, my motion would be...
There's more to go. I would not make a motion yet. I mean, I haven't started.
Okay, so far, I'm looking at the rooftop. These are all things that we would talk about if we opened the item fully, right? The rooftop, the grading table, numbers that have been missing, the cross-sections, not including the grading as you've described, the landscape plan, the missing page A 2.01, I think, was the number of it that none of us had. I just feel like maybe we need to take a better...
I just want to expand a little bit on the...
I'm sorry, that's a motion. Motion to... CDP.
Yes, once again, so Chair, someone can make a motion at any time, and I believe...
I'm trying to make a motion. Maybe for a second. Second?
I'll second it, but you're talking about a continuing. I mean, not to the CDP.
Yeah.
Okay, and then Drew, you had a comment?
I'd like to make a motion to receive and file.
Okay. Before we vote, you're gonna need a second on that, but...
He's got it.
Okay. The landscaping plan here, you can see it. Now, the LIP specifically says you can't block views with landscaping on PCH, okay? There is...
John, to clarify that, you're referring to somebody blocking the view of the mountain from PCH?
Yes.
In the area where then existing 30-foot-tall eucalyptus tree is that's blocking the view?
Okay, this is what I want to point out. Since the landscaping...
I just want to be clear about that.
I want to be clear about this. Since they don't identify the plants, I went through the plant schedule, okay? There are 64 trees. 64 in their buying that vary from 15 feet to 70 feet. The average is over 50 feet, okay? If you look at that plan, they're all in the front, okay? That is a major, major blockage. Now, if you also look at the other plan, which is on the regular sheets, there's no fences, but there's plants all around.
John, with all due respect, I'd prefer not to see this house.
I know, but I think it's incumbent upon the planning commission to follow codes, okay? And to follow the LIP and to actually have a staff report that is complete. Now, that's a question I want to ask of the city attorney. If we receive and file this, are we receiving and filing what we have here in front of us?
Correct.
Okay, now...
Hang on, Chair, everybody. So, basically, what the LIP says, if a majority of the planning commission requests that the issuance of an ACDP governed by the LIP be brought back. So, that is all you guys are voting on, whether or not to bring it back?
No, I know, but I want to know what is gonna... If Drew's motion passes, we are accepting whatever's here. Now, what happens to all the corrections and all the errors?
And so, I will defer to Director Malika or Planning Manager, Senior Planner Brooks. I apologize for not knowing your title. I assume the project would be processed consistent with all of the city's review and processes, but Director Malika, go ahead.
Correct. So, like any project, more detailed plans will be submitted, and the purpose of this approval is for a point in time to go back and look for consistency. The city's biologist has a condition on here about blocking views from neighboring properties. Looking for the condition right now.
That's irrelevant.
And she also has a condition about landscaping along the front property line and how that landscaping cannot form an impermeable hedge that blocks views. That was one of her conditions that's been incorporated into the project. So, there are conditions on it, and further details will be provided, but staff is looking for consistency with the coastal act when they do review this.
Okay, well, yes?
I was just gonna offer it to you, like, as an example in the real world related to this. For example, I had a project that I worked on that was approved by the planning commission. And the plans that were approved showed a large electrical panel out in the right-of-way area up by where the fence would be on a home similar to this scale. Well, when, during construction, it was then noted that that structure was taller than the allowable height for something located in that area. That issue was brought up by the planning after the home is nearly finished, and that item had to be relocated at the planning department's request to meet those codes and standards. So, I just want to say that all of those codes and standards are applied to the project throughout the construction process. Even so much as a home I worked on at one point, the home was framed two inches higher. Somebody clearly made a mistake above the elevation that was approved. The staff from this city went out there and made them re-frame and lower the house two inches to make sure that it was compliant.
Because?
Because our staff is diligent and does a great job. That's why.
I know, and what you will vote for when you accept this is 64 trees, 70 feet tall, in the front that has nothing to do... It's an LIP requirement. It's not a building code requirement, okay? Once they get that approval, we have a defective... We have a defective landscape plan that doesn't even... And we are approving this, and I want to point out that staff admits that they do not have natural grade. They don't have a landscape plan.
That is not what I heard.
They do not... We also heard that you had a slope analysis.
That is not what I heard from our staff at all.
Well...
Chair, there's a story poll planned. There's your start. If you can read that, then you can read everything.
Richard, if this gets approved and they plant 64 trees in the front of that house, are you gonna reverse it?
As I mentioned, the project's been conditioned so that you don't end up with a hedge along Pacific Coast Highway, and I'm sorry, but I disagree with the other comments you made earlier, Chair. Staff has not said that this project is lacking materials or provides inaccurate heights. There were materials on there, and the planner can... We need to go into detail, can describe on how she checked height. We are confident that this complies with the height limits. There's a survey that we have on file that demonstrates that the house is not located on hillside development standards-type slopes. So, I am sorry, but I disagree with the statements that were made earlier.
Did you... Would you make the statement that this is an adequate staff report for the commissioners that has adequate detail? No, I'm asking a question.
Correct, and so I'm gonna jump in and have that. That is not for the director, nor myself, nor Senior Planner Brooks to make. That is a decision for you all as a body. If you guys are not comfortable with it, you can go clear around the...
Chair, can we call the question?
No, you can't. My point is that if the planning commission accepts ACDPs that violate the LCP and the LIP and the building codes and have required data missing, required data, we are required to have a landscape plan, and the landscape plan has to tell you where the plants are. You can vote and approve this, but you're not doing your duty as the planning commissioner. So, call the question.
I, I just, I-
So the first question-
No, I want to be very clear about this, you have a landscape plan in front of you, you have a planting plan in front of you for plants, so I'm missing what you're saying doesn't exist, but besides that, let's call the question, so we can move this meeting along-
Okay, I, I, what I'm missing is A 15, tell me what tree it is, and how tall it is. Tell me what A 16 is, and tell me what A 19 is.
A, A 15 looks like it's the same as A 13 to me.
But it's a different tree, it's got a different number.
If you look on here-
There is no number for that.
Yeah, there is, it's a rose of California.
We're literally getting into weeds now.
It's a rose of California.
That's a bush.
Okay, well, that's what it's listed as, is number 15.
No, that's, that's, that's the bush schedule you're looking at.
Okay, well, maybe I'm not looking at the tree schedule, but I do know that our biologist for this city reviewed that, and I'm comfortable with his review, and I don't think that anything in this staff report that was done in any, any area or method of malice, or somebody trying to get around some law, I don't, I just don't see it at all. And if there's a specific question that you have about the tree that you have concern, you can call the applicant up, and you can ask them the specific question, or you have to, we can point to that, we can't just merely call out our, our own staff and say that they're, they're wrong and they're making mistakes, and they're clearly not when the evidence shows something contrary.
I won't do that, and John said, I have one question for you.
Yes, sir?
Are you going to put 26 holly cherry, holly leaf cherries, three California sycamores, and 34, I can't remember, read this, 49-foot tree, other trees, on the front 20% of that lot?
No.
Which adds up to 64 trees.
No.
Then why do you have a sta, a landscape plan that shows that?
I'd like to answer you.
Okay, answer me.
Okay, the landscaping plan doesn't show that, we have seven, eight, nine, 10 trees in the front, all the rest are bushes. And in regards to the table, which gives the specificity on the number and the types of the trees and the bushes, you're misreading it. If you would like my client to explain the table to you, we're happy to do so. There's not a forest of 64 trees going into the front yard of this house.
Okay, then why does the table say how many trees, why does the table say 26 holly cherry trees?
That's the total- Need to identify yourself for the- My name's Robin Kashani, I'm the applicant. That's the total number of trees on the site, spread out.
Okay.
They're not all being planted in any one individual place.
This I understand, there's 64 trees spread out on the site, but that's the, the, as Skylar just said, it doesn't show it.
I think he said 49.
49, but then, do you see 49 trees there, Skylar?
I don't know how many there are.
Scrubs for trees.
No, I'm not, they're big round things, okay, they cover, they're as, as big as the driveways.
I, I can help direct you a little bit better.
This plan I'm looking at.
I don't know exactly what sheet you're looking at, I'm looking at sheet L 5.
L 5.
So each one of those representations of a tree has a keynote attached to it.
Right.
That keynote has a number and a letter associated with it.
And that keynote is not on the-
The number, I'm looking at them here. The number on top is the quantity, the letter below references the type of tree that is being used.
And, and, but you do have on your schedule of trees, you have 26 of the holly cherry trees.
We, we also have planting in the back of the property is part of the ESHA, so there's, there's-
No, not part of the ESHA.
No, not part of the ESHA, my apologies.
Well, Don, I have another question for you, Don.
He said it, it's okay.
This is, this, Don, my, my question is, and then I'll stop, because obviously I'm gonna lose this vote, but L 5 shows the house, and at the back of the house is the beginning of the ESHA, the slope, okay? It's the beginning of your slope-
Did you say it shows the beginning of the ESHA?
Beginning of the, one, the, more three-to-one slope, you don't build anything behind that.
That's, that's correct.
Right, and there's no plan, there's no other landscape plan that goes behind this, correct?
Yes.
Okay, do you, so they have to be in front of the house, because there's nothing else if there's no plan behind it.
There, there is additional sheets, and I don't know if, if those are all in front of you, but the landscaping is spread out, and you will recall the exhibit that shows the, uh, two things, there's several relevant exhibits. One, the entire project is located on that yellow area in the slope map, which is all five-to-one slope, which is flat. And two, it's all set back from the map ESHA, which is, if, if you are familiar with the property, is-
Correct, and that's what I just said, behind this house, it's not yellow anymore.
It's not what?
Yellow anymore.
No, 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 the yellow does go back behind the-
A little tiny bit, but yes, 137 to 140, the purple, the other color starts.
So you are familiar with footprint of the house relevant to the slopes?
Yeah, which was not on the slope analysis. Well, I had to call the staff, right, and I had to find out what, what level, and I had to find out whether it was 65 feet or 95 feet to figure this out, had to call the staff, and then I had to call the staff and say, where's the house? And they told me what elevation, okay? Not in the staff report, okay?
I'm glad that staff fully informed you, Chair.
Okay, but you're saying that this is, this is the landscape plan.
That's the, that's the landscaping on the lower portion of the property.
And, and you're saying there is, there is a plan behind the house.
Which, there is some landscaping back behind the house, and that was provided to staff. I'd also point out that not only was it cleared by the city biologist, but we are conditioned to comply with the city MOLAS standards as it pertains to the amount of irrigation that we use. Species, amount of irrigation-
Okay, no, we don't care about irrigation, okay?
What did you say, sir?
Uh, the question was not irrigation.
Oh, it is for us, it's important to require-
That's the end of the question session.
Okay.
Okay, we will take a vote, and we will see who wants comprehensive staff reports in the future.
Nope.
May we take a call? First Drew's motion to-
Receive and file.
Receive and file.
Thanks, Chair Leonard.
Yes.
Commissioner Pete.
Yes.
Commissioner Hill.
No.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Chair Mazza.
No.
Motion carries.
Okay. So we are now off to-
5C, Chair.
5C. And, let me get 5C out here. 5C is coastal development permit number 24-003, conditional use permit number 22-004, and variance number 24-006, an application to allow an emergency communications facility to serve Los Angeles County Sheriff's Substation, including a variance to allow the height up to 86.8 inches, 86 feet point eight inches from a previously approved 75-foot tower, located at 23525 Civic Center Way. May we have a staff report, please?
Thanks, Chair Mazza, sorry, I guess we don't have a PowerPoint tonight, right? So, unfortunately.
We don't have a PowerPoint available to show on the sides this evening, but she can bring it up for your reference, and we have printed copies available on the dais, and one of everything out at the speaker table outside of chambers.
Okay, is this the PowerPoint? Did you get one?
And while they're working through that, just for reference, anyone that submitted files that they wanted to be, have viewed as they spoke, those have been printed and provided to the commission so that they have those available for their reference.
I think that's this, is that this? No. Is this different?
This is. These are the cross-sections.
What is this, is this part of there?
Those are just follows.
Okay. Okay, well, I think you're ready. So, you say you cannot show it on the screen, but we can, we can follow along, okay?
Yeah.
So would you just, as you do it, just say which page we're supposed to be on?
Uh, sure, so you have the slides in front of you? Is what I hear?
You got this?
Yes, so we're just on number one right now.
We, we have the slides, but we don't have page numbers on the slides, which is fine, but just, we'll do our best to follow along with you, we appreciate it.
I'll say next slide, how about that? Okay. All right, thank you, Chair Mazza, members of the planning commission, Tyler Eaton, Senior Planner, here to present the proposed Los Angeles County Sheriff Emergency Communications Facility, both the use and height are being proposed, CDPA number 24-003, CUP dash, 22-004, a variance is being requested, variance number 24-006. Next slide. So, your existing conditions that are on-site currently, the project is located at 23525 Civic Center Way, it is outside the appeal jurisdiction of the California Coastal Commission, however, it is a, it does qualify as a major public works facility, which would make it appealable to the coastal commission by definition. The site was approved in 2016, which included, by the city, which included the Santa Monica, the Santa Monica College Malibu Campus, the LA County Sheriff's Substation, and the emergency communications tower. Construction was completed in 2023, and site conditions of today will show all the approved development. Going to the next slide. So on January 13th, 2016, the final environmental impact report and mitigation monitoring report, monitoring and reporting program for the SMC Malibu Campus was certified by the SMC Board of Trustees, as they were the lead agency under CEQA. On February 29th, 2016, the City of Malibu Planning Commission adopted that final EIR and approved coastal development permit number 13056 for the Santa Monica, Santa Monica College Malibu Campus, which included the sheriff's substation and the emergency tower, as mentioned. There were conditions of approval within that CDP that required the development use colors that were compatible with the surrounding development, and also required that a conditional use permit be submitted to the city prior to the installation of, of the tower. In April of 2022, the emergency communications facility was installed at the site, the county had not yet submitted their required conditional use permit application, and the colors were not compatible with the surrounding environment as required by the CDP approval. At that time, city reached out to the county and relayed the issues, and there was an agreement that no work would be done until the necessary permits were, were pulled. On December 7th, 2022, the applicant submitted the CUP application for you tonight, and staff had let them know that they would also need to address the height discrepancy. So on February 20th, 2024, the applicant submitted the CDP amendment and the various variance requests for additional height. Going on to the next slide. The project description proposed before you tonight is coastal development permit amendment number 24-003 for the additional height, fixing the measurement discrepancy within CDP number 13056. There's a variance requested for that additional height above the allowed 28 feet in a institutional zone parcel, and there's a conditional use permit application for the use of the emergency Going on to the next slide. I would like to show you guys the proposed elevation if I could, but essentially what the county gave us for this application is essentially the same plan that they submitted to the city, or was approved by the city in 2016. So we have an emergency communications facility, most people have seen it on-site, with the inclusion of the lightning rod, it goes up to 86 feet eight inches. It's, like I said, it should be noted that it's essentially the same plan that they submitted in 20, or was approved in 2016. This next slide would have showed you that plan that was attached to the staff report in 2016, which again is essentially the same plan. Next slide. So just doing a comparison, which I, which I wish the public could see, but both towers had a lightning rod up to 86 feet eight inches in height, there is a difference that the county is proposing at this time, they're moving a microwave dish antenna from the 75-foot height area to about the 65-foot height area to try to help with some of the view impacts, and that's the height necessary for that specific microwave dish. I would like to mention, this is going on to the next slide, that, you know, we got some comments from the public, and I think some were valid in that I, I noticed that a lot of, a lot of the correspondence included project renderings from the 2016 approval, and looking back at those renderings, they did show the tower, looked like all the antennas were at the 75-foot height level or below, but those renderings also included a lightning rod that was above the 75-foot mark. But as mentioned in the previous slides, the plans, the technical plans, the elevations were what was built on-site and are the same from the 2016 approval. So another thing I wish the public could see, because it's very visual, originally when the tower got installed, the Federal Aviation Administration required that an aviation orange and white be used, and also red blinking lights be used because of the tower's proximity to the helipad on-site. We met with the FAA, we met with the applicant, the FAA essentially told us that there was a, there was an error in the location of the original application, so once they reviewed the, the resubmitted application with the correct location, they determined that those colors and the blinking lights were actually not necessary. So, the, the county is proposing a couple colors for us to view tonight, one is a tan, and then on the next slide you'll see a gray color to try to blend in, but the commission may also consider other colors they feel are more compatible with the surrounding environment. So with that, just want to reiterate, staff is not making a recommendation tonight, the decision is with the planning commission to, to decide on the matter, and we're available for any questions. And also, our wireless consultant, Bob Ross from CMS, is available for help with any technical wireless questions.
And then, Chair, if I may, just to reiterate, the item before you does not have a staff recommendation, thus whatever the direction and consensus of the planning commission is would result in a resolution being brought back on consent if that is the will of the commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we need to do disclosures. Greg?
Okay. I, I do have some practical experience with radio transmission, how radio waves propagate. I worked in radio in college, and so I understand things like interference, line of sight, et cetera, used wireless microphones in live sound setups, operating two-way radios in the context of both my own neighborhood watch and Malibu arson watch, and in particular, we've been experimenting with the effects of changing the height and orientation of transmitters on Castro Peak and Catalina Island to affect reception to and from arson watch people throughout the city. So we, we do have some sensitivity to these, these sorts of issues about line of sight, transmission power, et cetera. Also, I sent photos to planners approximately a year ago, before this application was in front of us, comparing the emergency comms tower at Lost Hills to this existing one here. They're very similar to the ones that have since been submitted by Ryan Embry and Scott Dietrich, showing the view permeable lattice frame style tower. And those are my disclosures.
None. Spent a lot of time in the area and stared at it, and we would like to make it more aesthetically pleasing if possible.
Drew?
None.
I spent a lot of time in the area, and other than that, I read, I tried to read all the letters, we got quite a few, I hope I read them all. And I think everybody else got the same letters, and the staff got them. Okay, do you want to have questions of staff, or you want to, do you, anybody have questions of staff right now?
We have the applicant.
Okay.
I have a lot, but I'll save them.
What?
Presentation from the applicant.
Yeah, we have to open the hearing. Okay. Do we have a speaker slip from the applicant?
Yes, it was, it was in there.
Can you invite them up?
Doesn't see right there, applicant team?
Oh, it's a sheriff, okay. Okay. We're opening the hearing, public hearing, and we have Sergeant Sunderland, I guess is your team, and- your team, and and anybody else on your team, you have fifteen minutes combined. And you can reserve any any part of that for rebuttal.
Hi, everyone. Before I begin, I wanted to make sure everybody received the the slides. Does everybody have a copy of this? If not, I have five copies for the commission.
I understood that you had copies to provide to them, so I don't believe yours has been provided yet.
Is that this?
Do you have one more copy for the public, or do you need it? You just put it on the long table. Thank you. You got one, right, Chair?
Yep. You want to share one? Do we have enough? Do you have one for the record, or do you need one? Okay. Okey-dokey. Off we go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Roger Hernandez with the Los Angeles County Chief Executive Office. The county team and I are here to speak on behalf of the county of Los Angeles and the county's conditional use permit application for the emergency telecommunications facility at the county-owned Malibu Civic Center. Through the project C U P application process, the city has requested amendments to our previously approved height variance and coastal development permit application for the use of the emergency telecommunications facility. The previously city-approved measurement of the telecommunications facility was seventy-five feet and did not include the height of any attachments, antennas, or apparatuses. The historic trellis-style tower was seventy feet tall, and with the inclusion of the antenna mounts and lightning rod, it measured approximately eighty-seven feet and six inches. Please see slide one, you'll see the historic trellis structure, and you'll see a measurement there. The current monopole structure that's in place now measures seventy-five feet tall with antennas slightly shorter than the historical tower at eighty-six feet eight inches. That would be the second slide, which shows the existing tower. With the new required point of measurement to include all attachments to the monopole, we are correcting our previous approvals to reflect the emergency communication facility with a maximum height of eighty-six feet eight inches. The new facility will serve the Malibu Sheriff's Substation constructed at this location as part of the recent Santa Monica College campus. I have with me today Maria Chong Castillo of Supervisor Horvath's office and colleagues from the County of Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, the County's Internal Services Department, and the projects consultant, M Six Consulting, who will be able to answer any questions you may have. Now I'd like to turn it over to Sergeant Christopher Soderland from the L.A. County Sheriff's Department, who will discuss the importance and necessity of this emergency telecommunications tower.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sergeant Christopher Soderland from the Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. I've been with the Sheriff's Department for sixteen years, with the last four years being at Malibu Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. So I wanted to give you an introduction about the Sheriff's Department and our responsibilities and our needs. So the Sheriff's Department directs emergency operations for the entire county. During wildfires, mudslides, floods, earthquakes, civil unrest, and other critical emergencies, all resources, both local and mutual aid from surrounding jurisdictions come into the Sheriff's Unified Command System and use our infrastructure, which includes radio towers. Specifically, in Malibu, the Sheriff's Department conducts all evacuations. Efficient radio communication and coordination is essential to protect life and property. Without it, response and evacuation times are increased, and safety for first responders is decreased. Finally, day-to-day law enforcement requires clear and reliable communication, radio communication, to enforce the law and serve the public. So the present situation, so deputies currently are utilizing an obsolete radio transmitting tower located at the old Malibu courthouse. This location was built over fifty years ago, and it currently does not meet global standards for telecommunications as it relates to operational performance, structural integrity, and survivability. There are large areas within Malibu with severely degraded radio reception, as well as dead zones with no reception. This is especially true in canyon areas. Our mobile digital computers inside the patrol cars operate with cellular. Many areas in Malibu, as you probably know, do not have cell signal to utilize the M D Cs in the patrol cars or our county cell phones, which are issued to us, leaving our radios as the only lifeline. In fact, radio signals are so poor that the Los Angeles County Fire Department has put a temporary mobile repeater antenna at the Zuma lifeguard headquarters due to their radio problems. They did this to enhance their readiness and response in anticipation of large crowds anticipated this summer. Quick note, the fire department uses the same radio tower as we do. Now, for some technical details on why we need this new tower approved. The new Malibu substation was designed to be its own fully functioning sheriff's station. We're calling it substation, but it has the capability to be its own full sheriff's station. So it has the capability to do its own dispatching and radio transmitting. The only way this can occur is by having a fully functional radio tower integrated with the station. Our radios use a repeater system to transmit the signal throughout the county. Our sheriff's communication center is located in East Los Angeles. The system is interconnected. So if you think of a a long link, the radio waves hitting one tower and then being transmitted to another tower. If one of those links is weak, the entire system becomes weak. Because of the repeater system, we need line of sight from one radio tower to another. And if we remember, radio waves, they travel in straight lines, they can't curve over mountain tops, and cannot go through mountains. In your packet here, if you go, if you look at a picture of the tower, the mountain peak behind it is Saddle Peak, and up at the top there is one of our repeater towers. So that's why the tower needs to be at a certain height to have line of sight to that From there, the signal is transmitted to other repeaters and throughout the county. If you go to the next slide, which is a map with blue dots on it, those mark the location of our repeaters. So you have one off Decker Canyon at Fire Station Seventy-two, you've got Castro Peak, then you have Saddle Peak, which is directly behind the substation up at the top of the mountain, and then you have one over in Topanga. And all these towers are interconnected, and the radio waves bounce from one tower to another. And then that green star at the top is Lost Hills Sheriff's Station. So our system is interconnected, and all those towers have to have line of sight to each other. Finally, if you look at the picture that has the green shading in the packet, that's the area around the substation. So the green areas are areas where our radio signal met performance metrics for signal strength. This was our internal testing. The other areas are areas with degraded radio signal. So you can see, in heavily populated areas, we have degraded radio signal with what we're currently working with. So and currently in Malibu, our radios only have approximately seventy-five seventy-five percent coverage with a signal, and approximately twenty-five percent of Malibu is a dead zone. Now imagine a wildfire sweeping through Malibu, or if you were here during the Woolsey Fire, think back to then. Evacuations are issued, and now deputies must go door-to-door to warn the residents. In many areas, especially in canyon areas, deputies would need to drive back down to P C H in order to hear the radio, relay the latest updates of homes which were evacuated or those who decided to stay. And they would have to get critical updates of the location of the fire. This would add precious minutes when seconds count. I'm sure everyone has seen the documentary Fire in Paradise, and the survivors talking about how no one warned them. Officials didn't communicate with them, and they didn't know. My fear is the next documentary that's going to made is going to be called Fire in Malibu. Maintaining the status quo is not a viable option. First responders are risking their lives day in and day out. Why continue the additional risks to them when there is a solution? The bottom line is this: The city of Malibu and its citizens deserve the finest public safety they can get. The County of Los Angeles is committed to providing that, and this tower is essential to further our commitment. Thank you. I'd like to bring back Roger to conclude our presentation.
Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to you this evening and for considering our C U P application and height variance amendment. We ask for your recommendation to approve our request so we can proceed with finishing construction and activating the emergency communications facility for reliable and improved communication for first responders and for the operation of the new Malibu Sheriff's Substation.
That's the end of your presentation, okay? You have six minutes and fifty-two seconds for rebuttal.
All right, thank you.
And while that'll be at the end of the meeting. Okay, our first speaker is Ryan Embry. He has one minute donated by Jan Ralik.
And Ryan, they do have a copy of the slides you provided?
I have five minutes from Peter and Charlotte, who are here. So that's six.
Oh, okay. Three, Peter Jones, and who else?
Charlotte.
You have five minutes.
I'm sorry for clarification, or there are three donated minutes?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And they're all here.
Yes, thank you. As a former chair of the Public Safety Commission of this city, and a former deputy to Joanne House on the Emergency Preparedness Commission of the County of Los Angeles, and a telecommunications commissioner, I'm sorry, I was on the Emergency Preparedness Task Force, and I worked the project to get the cellular antenna installed on the former tower. So I'm very familiar with the the whole project, and I got a call from your C A O, is what they called them back in nineteen ninety-six, in the middle of the Malibu Fire, trying to explain why their system didn't work, and how they were going to correct it immediately. So I'm not against the sheriff communicating. That was a nice recital of information. That's not about the issue or the needs on this tower and why it's located where it is, and why it's fifty feet higher than the roof of the building. It does not need to be. So other than painting it various colors, I find it very difficult. Public policy is to understand who gave the authorization to paint the thing orange and white, who paid for it, and why. And now we're just gonna have to paint it all over again, when they knew it was not gonna comply if they did that paint job. And the lighting, who installed all the electrification and put the light on top? And then here's the bigger question is, why hasn't the light been up there blinking for the last two years, if this is really a safety hazard? When did they get the switcheroo from the F A A that, hey, it's all right, you don't need the light after all? When the other pole that was shorter had a flashing light on it? I used to call the county and tell them when it burned out, because I could see it from my condom. So it's not, do we need to communicate? That's off the table. I'm sorry they wasted six minutes explaining that to you, and whatever deficiencies that they do have. They didn't identify two of the options. One was to put it on the fire station on Malibu Road. It would see around the coast much better. You can't get past Jack-in-the-Box with this thing, because there's a mountain in the way. You can't really get past Pepperdine either. The only thing it's good for is it's part of a relay system from Saddle Peak, which wasn't really disclosed in the initial C D P that this was part of a whole network system, but that's what they're proposing. So the satellite, I'm sorry, the microwave dishes, I think in your proposal that they said they were gonna move them or lower them or something in in the most recent revision of this thing. And to hit Saddle Peak, they'd have to basically aim it just barely above the horizontal, right into all the windows of the college on the second floor. That's what's thirty-five to forty feet off the ground for those windows. The roof is thirty-five feet ten inches, as somebody found in the in this plans, which was an exception by the commission. John Mazza, you were on it, remember it. So what's exacerbating this problem is unfortunately your location. You picked the exact corner of the highest point of the building with the highest roof, and there's a building between your choice of location for the tower and Saddle Peak. You couldn't have gotten it worse, I'm sorry. There was the earlier proposal was to put it farther back on the property. It was in line with the portico, as you can see in the the pictures, the before pictures of the tower, which was not seventy feet. It may have been approved to be up to seventy feet on paper somewhere, but I don't think that tower was seventy feet. You can look at the scale. I I looked at the pictures. I just went and measured the wall adjacent tangent to it. It's six and a half feet, and you can easily take your thumbnails and add it up. In the image of the picture, if you blow it up, the tower was about sixty feet high for this structure. So it was not seventy feet like was portrayed, and that has been the basis the entire time for why they are only going a few more feet fire higher, why it had to be seventy-five. Not that it couldn't be sixty-five and probably work just great, or fifty-five and still clear the building by twenty feet. I do know that there's a commercial component for this project, because I was the commercial first commercial component. I advocated to put a cellphone company on there so we could talk in Malibu. And the first company that did it was, well, they were changed their name twice in the process of the time it took to get on the pole. They rolled out the name Air Touch, and that happened to be the one when it went live in nineteen ninety-seven on January seventeenth, right after my birthday. And it ran for twenty years until three weeks before Woolsey Fire, and you guys told them to turn it off and take it down. Didn't have the temporary cell operating on the east side of the library yet, although the application was in. This is in your file. That's the location that's perfect for this pole. You can stand on the ground and see Saddle Peak. You don't need to be thirty feet up in the air. It's the same parcel number. It's had a tower there, a pole, for five years, operating since Woolsey Fire. The wires that can go from any control room need to go over to that other location. They need to file their C U P, and they can unbolt this thing and hook it up over there. It's just wires. It doesn't need to be exactly where it is. It's screwed into the ground. It's like a traffic signal. It's bolted into a foundation, which unfortunately was raised three feet and makes the whole project three feet noncompliant, because it's not at the natural grade. It's at a raised planter. Well, they put a planter around it to hide the raised foundation, so it's noncompliant. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Josh Spiegel, followed by Sam Kaplan.
Chris Frost asked me to be here tonight. The current chair of the Public Safety Commission sends his regrets and regrettably sent me. Just want to remind everybody that this city is currently completely focused on public safety, right? Through Woolsey, the astonishing amount of deaths that we've had on P C H, it's our job, and the city council has given you direct very, very clear direction: Make this city safer. Sheriff's asking you for something. And with all due respect to Sergeant Soderland, who I really like, I really didn't like his example of why we need any fire evacuations. Let me give you something else. On I've done ride-alongs, and what happens up the canyons is anytime there's a call up Latigo, Rambla, wherever it is, they take two cars to go up there, right, on any call, because there's no radio reception. So two cars are gone for one call. That leaves the rest of Malibu basically screwed. Do any of you know how many cars are in Malibu right now? Anybody raising your hand? None? Four? There are two right now. Okay? So if, no, there's two.
He drove here.
Oh, he's, okay. Well, there's two two-man cars right now. So if there's a call up Decker, the rest of Malibu is screwed. If what Sergeant Soderland is telling us is accurate, that this will help with the communications, he can now send one, and now we have another car. We need the cars. And, you know, sometimes on our commissions, we get bogged down in the weeds, and I think that we need to take a ten-thousand-foot view of this. What makes Malibu safer? What's best for the entire community? And this is about safety versus aesthetics. Like, I hate the pole. It's ugly, right? Let's paint it a different color. Frankly, I don't really care. But this is about safety, and we need this. Okay? Let's let's be adults. If it, yes, it's ugly. Could it be somewhere? Maybe, maybe not. Ryan seems to be the expert. I mean, hopefully you can learn how to log on to Zoom correctly, but we'll get there one day. We have a habit of finding reasons why or why we can't do something here. It's time to just, you have a plan in front of you. Let's Let's do it. Let's make Malibu safer, all right? What else do I have? You know what? I'm just gonna leave at that. Thank you very much.
Josh, before you leave, you're speaking as an individual, not as a Commissioner or from the Safety Commission, correct?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Sam, you're next. Sam here?
And Chair, if I could just let you know that at the moment we have confirmation that we do have video on our Zoom.
Oh, okay, great. I'm sorry, Ryan got his six minutes and that was Sam. Okay, we have Scott Dietrich.
Rebecca, why does it keep sounding like we're in an elevator?
That, I think, is about as explicable as why that keeps going up and down. All I can say is I have no control.
Okay, well, Scott, you're in control.
Oh, okay.
You give him his three minutes, though.
Excuse me?
You had 16 seconds. Now you have three minutes.
Oh, I think I've got another minute right now.
From who?
Yep. It's making its way.
It's making its way. We do exceptions for turning them in after the hearing starts? We will make an exception for you, Scott.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Commissioners, first, thanks for all you guys do, man. It's just so much work. This is an affront to the city. This is power trying to force a project onto us. It's the county. And if elites can come before you and force projects, then why are you here? You guys, different membership perhaps, approved a certain tower. I saw the sketches of the old tower. We don't seem to be able to dig them up and I've seen the other towers that exist and they don't look like that monstrous thing out there. But somehow it's come before you tonight. We do need a communications tower. There's no question about it. Is this one in the right location? Well, they never analyzed that, that there may be much better locations. Will this solve our problems of the sheriff being unable to communicate in the canyons? I don't think so. That line of sight, I do understand line of sight. And no, the canyons block everything, whether it's 86 or 120 feet, isn't gonna make any difference. Note that this has been called an emergency tower. How long does the emergency go on? We don't have a sheriff's substation that we all want and it doesn't look like we're gonna have one. LASD doesn't have the manpower for it. And so why is this always, oh, this is an emergency? Well, it's been an emergency going on since 2016. That seems a bit disingenuous, as does the color. I hate to say it, but it was a big FU by the county. We can do whatever we want and you guys had better approve it. And I think this comes to a point where the Planning Commission has to decide, can anybody walk over Malibu just because they have power? If that's the case, you might as well go home and just approve everything because I think this is really wrong. Since it was built, I've been in front of the City Council. I've brought it up to City Manager McClary at the Business Roundtable that the darn thing was ugly. It's also very excessive. It's a commercial enterprise. You notice all the stuff that's on it, dishes and whatever? Somebody's making money off of that. That's why they want to leave it there. I do urge you to reject this, have them start over. Let's find the best location for it. Maybe it's up on the ridge line on a building. I don't know. I don't know the technical expertise, have the technical expertise. But Ryan seems to think there's a lot of other places to put it. Let's analyze that to be sure that we're putting it in the best location. And, you know, they can operate quickly. It can be unbolted and moved. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Jefferson Wagner, followed by Joe Drummond.
Good evening. Thank you very much for your service to the community and to be focused on what the community needs truly are. You're here for the entire community. As a former elected here, I've appointed some of you and I've worked with Skyler when he was elected to City Council. I did spend several years at the original Malibu Sheriff's Substation as a Level 1 Reserve Deputy. The tower that we used to transmit was about 100 yards from where this one is, maybe 50 yards. It seemed to work. It didn't impact the helicopter landing and takeoff at the old tower space. The old tower was a little shorter. My suggestion would be for you to talk to the planners and to the evaluators and to the user of the system. It still has a straight line to the top of, well, to Payuma, where the other transmitting tower is. And you recognize also that Castro Peak is part of the system as the sheriff indicated. It's a dot matrix. You can't go down deep into Latigo Canyon. You can't go onto the other side of Canaan. There are certain places where two deputies going up in two units are necessary because that's their security protocol, going to remote places. They also have their personal cell phones to use because I'm in Latigo Canyon and sometimes when there's a call for a deputy, he comes up alone based on what, depends on what the circumstances are and what the call is about. So my suggestion to you as Planning Commissioners is to relocate it directly behind the buildings over near where the helipad was, where the original tower was. That way you won't see as much of it, but they can have their elevation and it won't impact the entire community. They'll still have service. Thank you very much.
Okay, Joe, you have four minutes. You have?
I think I have five because I have, Charlotte was supposed to donate to me.
Charlotte donated to, she already donated.
Sam Hall Kaplan was supposed to donate to Ryan. Charlotte was supposed to donate to me. It should be.
Yeah, but Sam, both of them used it. Unfortunately, you have.
Were they both counted on?
But then can I have Sam's? Because Sam.
Rebecca, was Sam's?
I, what I have noted is that Sam Kaplan, I noted that those three people donated to Ryan Embry. What do you see on the speakers?
So I see. So correct, Sam Kaplan did have Ryan Embry. However, the Post-it note said wants to donate one minute to Joe Drummond for Charlotte Freeze. Does that clarify it or?
So Charlotte and Luis are donating to me.
And Dexter Jones to Ryan Embry.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chair, just go ahead. This is.
So how many minutes? Five minutes? Okay, and then Charlotte's has not been used?
Charlotte is for me and Luis is for me. So I have five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you. Honorable Chair Mazza and Planning Commission, I'm here on behalf of Malibu Township Council, who has been advocating for responsible development since 1947. We are also, we've also always been about safety in Malibu. MTC comments are in opposition to the recommended action and request the matter to be continued or denied to ascertain facts as there are discrepancies not only in the height of the former antenna tower for which this subject approval seeks to replace, but also for the current antenna pole. When reading through the information provided by staff, we see that there are different heights mentioned, 75 feet, 91 feet as the current height. So this needs to be clarified. We also request a guarantee of the safety of the proposed pole use. This permit should only be for use for emergency communications and no other entities should be allowed to hook up to this and it should not be used for day-to-day operations, just emergencies. This should have come before the Public Works Commission originally as it's a macro telecommunications issue, but it slipped through unchecked with the college. The applicant violated the generous height allowance of maximum 75 feet height above then existing grade by adding fill material around a raised foundation and retaining wall for its pole structure resulting in an increased height above ground level, which I sent you all pictures of today. The applicant also did not meet its condition of approval for wireless transmission uses on the subject pole and is applying retroactively for a conditional use permit for the wireless operations thereon after construction. As this pole is being erected only for public safety, the pole needs to meet the original condition of approval of 75 feet from grade. With our own inspection, we note that the pole is at least four feet, possibly five feet above grade and therefore it is not at the original location approved, which is supposed to be a grade. The code says that height needs to be measured from natural or finished grade, whichever is lower. Therefore, a minimum of five feet should be eliminated from the height of the pole or at least the top tier removed. The height is measured at 91 feet tall above ground level as stated in the FAA Southwest Regional Office Obstruction Evaluation Group's report dated March 7, 2022 and it need not be near this high. Given all this discrepancy on the tower height, a proper survey needs to be completed from the original existing lowest grade before any approval can occur. This is already, there is already an existing antenna on the courthouse and a temporary emergency communications antenna tower behind the library, which is at the last page of this, this thing. Which no one notices that one. And that's all under 30 feet tall where no transmission issues have been reported as far as we know as less, and this is half the height of the pole. This new pole will not provide more radio coverage than existing antenna according to Hans Letts, our local radio expert. The county must prove it can provide more coverage than already available before overbuilding this huge tower. The Malibu fault goes through the area and fall radius has not been considered in the event of an earthquake. A full study was never completed for this pole in the ERI. Should the county be able to move forward in the future after proving the necessity of this communications tower and the actual current height then from grade, not where it's located now, a variance can allow an antenna or lightning rod on top to bring it to a max of 86 feet high or 81 feet from where it is located now, if it is indeed only 75 feet high. Again, the actual correct height needs to be correctly surveyed before any approval can be made. We know it is at the very least four feet too high right now due to its unpermitted raised foundation. The top platform mount needs to be removed and the number of antenna reduced to the bare bones required for fire and emergency communications, nothing more. And this says there's 24 antennas, not just 19, that are risky and too many for this pole. In the staff report on page 86, it states, "For the antennas modeled, the areas shown in yellow and blue are exceeding exposure limits for the general public." And then on page 102, it says, "Blue represents areas predicted to be within 100% and 500% of general public maximum permissible exposure limits. The general public should be restricted from accessing these areas. Yellow represents areas predicted to be 500% and 5,000% of the general public MPE limits. The general public should be restricted from accessing these areas. These limits are not safe, so these antennas should be removed. The pole should also be painted a beige color that matches the color of the college and all lights must be removed as the FAA does not require them. You can currently see the pole not only from Legacy Park but from the PCH. So we request denial of this application as there are communication towers already in force that are much lower and completing the same task. The county cannot try and profit from this huge eyesore with all the safety risks caused from this pole. Thank you for considering all of this before just rubber stamping this approval with, basically have the facts."
Got it to the second. Okay, do we have any Zoom callers?
We do and I will be working the speaker clock as well as these, so please bear with me for a moment. Our first speaker is Lonnie.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Good. I don't want to take your time. I just have two questions to ask you. One is, did you receive my email letter? All of you?
Yes.
We did.
Did you have the time to read it?
And Chair, Chair, this is not, you can stop her time. This is not a back and forth. You have three minutes to make any comment you want.
I won't take my time if everyone has read it. That's what I'm, that's where I'm going. I don't want to take up your time if everyone has already seen what I have to say.
Lonnie, it would not hurt for you to make your statement. We got a lot of letters, so you might as well reinform us.
Okay. As Executive Director of the Malibu for SafeTech.org, I represent a large number of residents who object to the pole antenna next to the SMCC building. I'm gonna preface this. Our group was one of the plaintiffs who won a case against the FCC two years ago. The U.S. Court of Appeals for the D.C. Circuit Court ruled "The Federal Communications Commission failed to provide a reasoned explanation for its determination that its current guidelines adequately protect against harmful effects of exposure to radio frequency radiation." This was a historic win. The FCC will have to reopen the proceedings and for the first time, meaningfully and responsibly confront the vast amount of scientific and medical evidence showing that current guidelines do not adequately protect health and the environment. The FCC failed to acknowledge, let alone respond, to comments concerning this and I'm gonna skip through some of what I wrote to you. "The students who go to SMCC will be exposed every day to these emissions. I went to the farmer's market yesterday and the vendors who had their booths right under what might be a multi-cell tower, unless you use the precautionary principle and decide to move it or use the existing macro tower by the library, will be exposed to this every day or on Sundays. This tower is higher than allowed and sits on an earthquake fault, although measures have been said to have been taken to mitigate that. As we all know, disasters happen. Cell sites and cell fires are not normal fires. They cannot be put out as a regular fire would be. The grid must be shut off and any action that can be taken can take up to 30 to 60 minutes. Aside from that, the fall zone for this pole would disastrously impact the SMCC building. According to the City Planning Resolution 1630, it was built to be a communications tower for emergency services for the sheriff's department, but it doesn't seem like that is going to happen. It was supposed to be on the first floor of the SMCC building. The county doesn't seem to have the money to put the old substation together. So there really is no need for this new transmitter in this location. I believe that if you move it to the old location over by the library that transmits to Saddle Peak, it would be a much better choice. And last but, last but not least, it's an eyesore of the community. It should have never have been approved. There are so many statements in Resolution 1630 that say, "To the benefit and serve the community." This pole doesn't serve the community and in fact it attracts from the rural nature of Malibu and puts those in close proximity in danger every day.
Exposure to emission. You are at time.
Okay, thank you.
Our next speaker will be Bill Sampson.
Good evening. Thank you for listening. I tend not to be in that area too much, so I'm not as directly affected. Next time I need a $327 sweatshirt or a $37 hamburger, I'll be sure to stop and look at this pole. However, it was knowingly built illegally. There's a saying in the illegality business, "If you can't do the time, don't do the crime." The people who put it up decided to do the crime. It's time to do the time. Tear it down, start over. That's what should be done. They didn't build what was permitted. They built something else. Yeah, it's ugly. I will defer to Ryan on the technical aspects of transmission. I happen to respect Sergeant Soderland. Soderland, probably mispronounced your name, sir, I apologize. And the need for safety transmission, but he was speaking an awful lot about the fire department. It didn't matter what they would have been told during Woolsey. Ask the people on Point Doom if more communication would have helped. They had all the communication in the world what they didn't have were firemen fighting fires. So building this thing illegally isn't gonna change that. Jefferson correctly mentions, you don't get radio transmissions in canyons. I've tried to use cell phones in the mountains. It's a waste of time. If you got a satellite phone, you can do it. We're not building a satellite. We're building a structure here which is too high and too ugly. And who's making all the money off the cell use of it? I'm not making it. It's not really contributing anything to us. Take it down, start over, put it in the right place, I think it may be in the wrong place, I would defer to Ryan on that. There are other people who can study it. But this thing was improperly done, should be removed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bob Ross. He's got his hand up.
I don't have anything at this time unless somebody asks him questions for me.
Okay, then Robert, if you could lower your hand, and then if you hear a question being discussed by the commission that you would like to respond to, raise it at that time. Thank you. And that concludes our virtual speakers.
Okay, you now have how many minutes for rebuttal?
Six minutes and 52 seconds.
Okay, it's all yours, and we can ask you questions once the hearing is closed, or any of your staff.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make a few points now that we're in our rebuttal phase. First off, the lighting on the new tower, you notice it's not activated, it's not blinking. FAA, they approved, and it wasn't no longer necessary, along with the color of the tower. We went to the FAA and we asked them to change the color, and we asked them about the lighting, and they made those revisions to it. Also, there was a question about the commercial component on this tower, and we wanted to reiterate that this is only for emergency communications purposes, it's an emergency communications facility. There's no wireless facility. There are no plans to have any commercial revenue generating cellphone companies on this tower. Thirdly, I wanted to answer questions about why the height is necessary and why we need this tower at this location, and also there were questions about the emissions from the tower. For that, I have Shirley Wang and Jason Jacks from the county's Internal Services Department who have more information about that.
So specifically in regards to the emission study, we have provided that as a part of our submittal, and I'm sure you guys have spent some time reviewing it. Just to sort of answer some of the commentary from the public, the emissions that were said to exceed the public safety limit are at places that are totally inaccessible to people. So for example, you'd have to be at 35 foot elevation. Oh, sure. I think, do you guys have a copy of the EMI study?
Yes.
You do?
Yes, I do, it's...
Can you refer us to where it is in the staff report?
Hold on real quick, it starts, where do you want to show them, the propagation maps or...
Well, it's just, there's a, there's a side profile and it's, I'll just sort of briefly explain what's going on, but essentially at 35 foot elevation, you have to be within a few feet of the antennas.
I think, so real quick, I think what they want to see is, what I think you're getting at is 92, page 92 of your staff report.
Yeah.
Well, that, we don't have numbers like that, so is it in a supplement? We don't have PDFs.
Well, some of us do. I'm trying to find...
What's the title of the top of that section?
Our exposure simulation.
Exposure simulation from Malibu Sheriff Monopole Elevation View.
It's 92 of 110, so it's near the back.
Okay, thank you.
And it looks like that.
Gotcha. Everybody see that? Wait one second, everybody get on that. Okay, is everybody set with this page? Okay, go ahead.
It's not an accurate description to say that this tower exceeds emissions exposure, especially given the fact that you have to be in a very inconvenient location for that to be true. Specifically also, it's, just to clarify a little, so when it says public exposure limit, there is a difference between that and occupational exposure limit. The public exposure limit is, it's the most conservative level when it comes to the FCC's OET 65 description as to what emissions are allowed. So this is the most conservative rendering, I guess you could provide. And another detail on this too is that the study was conducted with all of the antennas at 100% duty cycle, which is not a typical standard of operation. Typically, if you have transmit antennas, they key on, they key off, they may not be running, so you will be, you will be below 100% duty cycle pretty much at all times. So that's worth noting, that this study was conducted with all antennas at 100% duty cycle, which is very conservative.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak? We can ask you questions later, and I'm sure we will. You've got three minutes and 45 seconds.
Hi, everyone. There was also the question regarding the height of the tower and whether it was built at grade or in a planner box, and an additional four feet was included in the height. For that, we have Masood Mahmood, M6 Consulting, he can get more specifics on the height.
The building, the courthouse, the old courthouse, was as a grade four feet above parking lot to meet the floodplain regulations and requirements. So the finished grade was established at where the old courthouse used to be, and the parking lot is four feet below that. So all the measurements of the monopole is from finished grade, and in fact, we've submitted a survey, once the construction was completed, to the planning staff, that sets the height of the pole at 74.86 below the 75 feet.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, there was another question about tower location, and we wanted to see if we could have the sheriff's department, Ted Pow, will speak on that.
Good evening, commission. The tower has to be right next to the equipment room for, for the radio to work properly. The longer you put the tower away, the more line lots you're going to have, and the radio room has to be adjacent to the sheriff station to support all the sheriff station function.
If I may, I'd like to add some more details in regards to the need for the tower location. Just to add some more information along the lines of what some of the public commentators were addressing, we have two microwave paths on this monopole. One goes up to Saddle Peak, another one which includes two dishes, points towards Rolling Hills transmit, which is located in Rancho Palos Verdes. Both of those links are required to provide redundancy for the site. If we have one, let's say we have one link just to Saddle Peak Nike and no other redundancy hop, what that means is that if that one hop fails, the site loses communications. So therefore, it is required that we have a link to Saddle Peak and a link to Rolling Hills. Specifically, the, the link to Rolling Hills as well, like I said, there's two dishes. One is at roughly the top of the tower, well, I'm sorry, not top of the tower, it's located at, I'll be more specific. It's at 65 feet, and the second dish is at 50 feet. And that hop specifically pointing towards Rolling Hills transmit is, there are lots of trees, so that, that centerline is required to reach that, that link back to Rolling Hills. Thank you.
Wait, wait, one, we'll close the hearing, you have 35 seconds, do you need that?
No, I think that's enough.
Okay, we're now going to close the hearing, and we'll have commissioner questions, Craig?
Yeah, okay, I, I have some series of questions, and then I can let others have questions, whatever, and then I have some comments and notes beyond that based on everything I hear. Questions?
First comment, this is going to probably take a while, do you guys see us getting to the next item, yes or no?
I don't see it.
Okay, so, for those that are here for the next item, I'm just making it known that we don't hear new items after 10:30 at night, or get into that. We're about an hour in advance of this, and I'm just anticipating that this is going to be a while, so I'm letting you know that.
Mr. Donigan, do we need to continue those items?
I just want to be sure that there's, there's two items, we still have 5A and then 5D.
Okay.
As well, and so, once again, you do not have to continue them, but if that's the will of the commission so that there's...
Let me ask, staff, what, what is the, what is the availability of continuances as far as dates certain? Soon as possible, date certain on those two items, 5A and 5D.
Chair, I believe that it would have to be July, and the reason why I say that is that at your next meeting, you already have two time-sensitive public hearings, one for the chili cook-off and one for the CUP for the tow yard at Malibu High School.
Okay, so July 5th, 15, what's the first meeting, the first available?
Would it be possible for the planning director and I to confer a little bit? We do have a pretty full slate at this time.
So we're going to take a, a three-minute recess.
Thank you.
Is that long enough? Okay.
Reminder, please do not speak about the item or with anyone in the audience, thank you.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, can we, do we need a roll call? Yes. July, July 15, 1-5. Can we have a roll call?
We have an applicant.
Well, Rebecca, did you clear this with the applicants?
I mean, both applicants are unhappy with not being heard this evening, they've...
But they can make the meeting, correct? Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
I'm sorry, I'm hearing, I'm hearing that somebody's not available.
Okay, then, we're going to take another minute recess and... What item and, and what date for the second item?
Sir, sir, not yet.
Sir, sir, not yet.
I'm making a motion to continue item five A and five D to July 15th, 2024. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, may we have a roll call, please?
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Pete?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we're opening, we're opening up. I have a quick question of the technical you. I'm sorry, I forgot your name. And I'm, I'm looking at this diagram you told us. What's wrong? Oh, I'm sorry. I did not notice that. I am very sorry. Okay, we don't need a timer anyway. I'm looking at the diagram you showed us about the propagation of the waves.
Yeah, correct.
And what I noticed was the entire first floor of the school is covered by the green wave. Top floor. So every student in that school and every teacher is continually zapped, or whatever term you use. Is that not what the diagram shows?
We have black and white copies. It's a little difficult to read.
Oh, okay. It's, you want my copy?
I believe.
It's the green.
So the thing is, is that that green, that should be within 100% to under the 100% threshold.
It's up to 100% is what it's labeled.
Is that what it says?
So they're, they're 100% that it's only the blue and yellow that hurts you? Because I, we had a testimony earlier that, that there's a court order that, that FCC didn't do it right or something. So do we know that to be the case? Because I don't want to zap a bunch of kids.
That, that description about the FCC changing their guidelines, that's, that's a very tricky thing to say because the FCC has a very long document called OET 65 that talks about emissions and it goes over public limits and occupational limits. And there are many, many ways to calculate emissions in different environments and different antennas. And to say that the FCC made a change to that guideline, I think that that would have to require more specificity.
Okay. But there is a possibility that any student on the second floor of that building or any teacher, I should say, students are not there all the time, any teacher could be getting microwaved or whatever, whatever kind of wave it is.
So let me, I'll do this. There's a statement provided by SiteSafe. And it's on, it's part of the executive summary section and it says, I have it highlighted. And I'll just read this section. The site will be compliant with the FCC rules and regulations as described in OET bulletin 65 upon implementation of the proposed remediation. And then the corrective actions are detailed as additional signage that say essentially caution sign, which is typical at radio communication sites. And then there's another site for NOC, which is Network Operations Center. NOC information sign required, which is, that's more for either first responders or anybody that has to get a hold of the operations center to notify them as to a break-in or if there's a technical issue with the site or if there's an emergency. So more of just practical signage, but it's not necessarily indicative of anything beyond normal.
Okay. Now, your study was, your mitigation study was done in 2016. Has anything changed since 2016, which was eight years ago?
No, nothing has changed. The antenna loadout planned by the sheriff's department is still the same.
Well, my question is, has anything changed with the FCC since 2016?
I don't believe so.
Okay.
So the study, the study was done very recently. It was conducted.
Well, I'm talking about the mitigation study.
Correct. Yeah, that was done in January 4th of 2024. Are you asking about FCC guidelines?
No, no, I was just wondering if your study was up to date. Okay.
Correct.
The second question is. You said the radio room had to be adjacent to the tower, but, or some version of that. I guess the sheriff's department, sorry, had to be near the tower. But the radio room is on the far side of the whole building. I would assume it's.
Radio room right adjacent to the tower.
So the sheriff isn't near the radio room?
The sheriff is, it's on the other side of the building.
Right. So he has nothing to do with the radio room?
Yeah, it does. The radio room is connected to the sheriff's station. The radio room also connects to the tower, but the distance between the tower and the shelter, equipment shelter, has to be close.
So the equipment shelter is not with the sheriff's station?
No.
Okay.
Right, it's right adjacent to it, to the tower.
In the interest of not just jumping all over the place, can I jump in on this question?
Yes.
You can extend the lengths of things if you use larger gauge cabling and to overcome the impedance issues and have proper shielding. And it should be that you, within a couple hundred feet, shouldn't have any real issues other than the extra cost of doing a little bit better cabling, right? What, what other factors would there be in the proximity that would make any difference at all?
Yeah, when, when you have large amount of conduits with large amount of coax, it gets very big and it's very difficult to get them constructed to make turns. The radius has to be very, very large. So the bigger you are, it's harder to, to implement that, that design.
But we're, we're talking about maybe a couple hundred feet would, could be the difference that makes all the difference for a lot of people's concerns. And it seems like just a slightly larger, larger gauge and some shielding and.
It won't be a slightly larger gauge. They, they go from, we normally use three-quarter inch coax. And anything above that, it gets very difficult to work with and very, also very expensive.
Expensive, but not impossible.
Everything, because not just the coax itself, right? You gotta have conduit that, that can fit all those cable in there. So the conduit runs has to be much bigger too. The turning radius of this conduit runs have to be very large.
Okay. All right, sorry. Go ahead, John.
No, no, just one, just one. Yeah, go ahead.
What, so. Part of what we're here to tonight is to look at the project the way that it is. But then we also have sort of these realms that we're discussing right now with, maybe we can't approve it in this location, but could it go in another location? And so what I'm hearing from you is that, yes, it could go in another location, but it would cost more money to be done.
Well, I mean, we gotta build a new equipment room too. And then now if that new equipment room has to connect back to the sheriff's station too. So you're talking, not just talking about moving a tower, you're talking about.
So there's a lot of costs that are associated with it.
Talking about power, moving the power too, right? You gotta run power to all those locations.
Uniquely, I know something about that.
Everything has to be connected. And if there's underground issues to run those power, it's, it's very difficult engineering.
Understood.
He's a professional electrician.
Okay. The, the other element here, if you don't mind, Chair.
Go for it.
Has to do with the elevation. So, will you come up real quick? So the elevation that we're shown here is an elevation above the current finish grade of 86 and a half feet. Is that correct? Eighty-six, eight.
Eighty-six, eight is to the top of the sheriff.
The top of the lightning rod?
Yes.
Okay. And that's measured off of the, the grade that where the antenna stands right now?
Finish grade, yes.
Okay. So the issue with us is the way that the code reads. If the code reads, it's supposed to see the actual grade or the finish grade, whatever is lower. So the actual grade for that area, and I was on the city council when the argument was made that a building that's taller needed to be in place because the kids were gonna get a better education. It was really hard for me to wrap my head around that, but in any event, that's was done. I was on the losing side of that argument. So the building got made a little bit taller, but the building also got made taller because they added fill and raised what was the natural grade to create this new finish grade. So I have an issue with the drawings that show me a height of eighty-six feet, eight inches, but yet we're supposed to measure that from that lower natural grade, which is three to four feet lower, maybe even five feet lower than what the grade is that's being used for the measurement.
So.
Regardless, I think any antenna here would require some element of a variance that's super substantial. But that's an issue that I'm just raising because I think others are gonna raise it too. Hopefully I explained it.
So a couple of things. The drawings that you see tonight, what the staff has provided to you is no different than what was approved in 2016. So all we're trying to do is to reconcile the way height was, was measured or we were told to measure the height, which was from finish grade to the top of permanent structure versus the current determination of height, which is finish grade to the top of the antennas. The, all the analysis you can imagine, a project of this magnitude went through a lot of scoping, vetting, all the way from 2013 through the EIR process, through planning commission, to meeting with the staff. And the thought process with respect to measurement of the height was to the top of the permanent structure. Any antennas, any other things that is removable, that could be outdated, change of technology was not to be measured. So the drawings are not different. All we're doing is.
I have a question along those lines.
Yeah.
So if the out, technology were to be outdated, would this antenna all of a sudden miraculously lose 30 feet on itself?
I don't know. The pole would.
Because I, I would find that to be very unlikely.
No, the pole, that's why, that's why, that's why we believe that it was a correct way to measure the height. Because the monopole would not change, obviously, but the antennas would. If you look at the old trellis antennas, they measure 17 feet, whereas these new antennas and lighting rods are about 16 feet. One more point that I want to bring up. The only thing above 75 feet, the only antenna over 75 feet are the sheriff antennas and the lighting rods, which are whipping antennas, meaning maximum two inches.
No, they're very small. I get it. So thank you very much.
Could I respond to the finish grade, Skylar?
I, you know, Skylar, I think finish grade was determined when they built the building.
Well, he made.
Okay.
He also made the comment about floodplain. Is that why this, that was the reason for the elevation?
Finish grade was the same level as the existing building. It was established during the review process, but the parking lot is four feet below and it was raised in order to be out of the flood and female planes.
If you remember the building, the old, the old building.
So there was no change in raising the grade?
The issue was over the elevation with them. They measured the, the height off of the finish grade for the building. And people were trying to point out that the whole building was built on fill and it was added. It wasn't the natural grade.
Right.
So regardless, it's a very tall antenna.
No, I, I agree more.
The original sheriff's station, which was probably built in 1950, was raised. You walked upstairs to get to it. Okay, so it's, you're not talking much plan. Thank you very much. Let's go back to Craig. You got a series of questions.
Yeah, I've got some questions.
Everybody else does too.
And then probably some comments. But first to just say for the public, anybody listening, watching, I, I think I can speak for all of us. Nobody here is talking about compromising safety in any way whatsoever. That we're, the point is, can we keep it just as safe and do it in a less invasive way? So my question is, we've heard a lot of different things about when the sheriff's station is going to be manned. I wonder if we could get a clear answer about the timeline on that because I don't know who, this is from staff or what, what is the current?
I don't know if there's a real nexus to the, to the tower because the tower is gonna be used for communications whether they're there or not.
Well, this is, this is getting to some, leading to some questions I have. But so.
Ask the sergeant.
Sergeant Soderland, do you have?
I also, I also.
What's, what's like the formal word on, on how long it's gonna be?
And we've also have a, a city put out a statement on that also. We can have staff tell us about.
So there is no estimated time for it to open and it has all to do with staffing.
What, what would be the soonest it could open? Like, what, it depends on the budget schedule or how does that?
It depends on hiring.
Yeah.
We need to hire the deputies. The deputies need supervision, sergeants, lieutenants. We can't open it without adequate staffing.
So theoretically, it could be next month or it could be 10 years from now?
I don't have.
We don't have any way.
Now Drew has a.
Probably not, but I'm just, yeah.
Drew, your same question?
So you, just to re, it seems like we're kind of getting off topic here.
No, I, there's a foundation.
No, 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 it's his question.
I, it seems like what we're here to choose is if we're gonna change the color. I think having discussions about moving this pole and tearing up the driveway on a completed project is kind of off the table at this point. And I just wanted to reiterate, this is for public safety. You guys need this.
Okay, you're not asking a question, you're making a statement. So we'll go back to.
That's my question.
Correct, yes.
And.
The way that it was built and designed is a fully functional sheriff's station.
Correct.
Dispatching capabilities, radio transmitting capabilities, and that's, with it, you can't have one without that. That's why you need the tower.
Let me ask you a simple question.
Yes.
You have a staff at Lost Hills that services Malibu?
Yes.
When they, when you have a staff in Malibu, you can have the same staff in, in Lost Hills, are they gonna move here?
The plan was to be deployed out of here.
Okay, then, why would you need to hire?
To eliminate the need of driving.
Let me know why you need to hire anybody else.
No, the plan was to increase the, the staffing at the station.
But you could have the same, but you could have the same service we have now.
That's a question for the city council on there.
Okay, so what, what I'm trying to get at now is to understand this is expressly and solely for the substation? Or would this tower play any role in relay communications from other tower? Is this useful before and until we have people actually in the station answering the radio?
Yeah, it serves both purpose. It's, right now, it will take the, the radio transmission within the coverage area back to what the sergeants say, all the way back to ECLA. It's all connected. That's what the microwave's, that's what the microwave's doing is sending the signal all the way back to ECLA and send it all back down to all the mountaintops. Sergeant mentioned all those six, seven mountaintop radio sites. It's all connected. Also, it's connected to Kalina sites too.
And Rolling Hills. Question for staff. My understanding, if I read the application, this is for radio comms for the substation. There is not a discussion or analysis of it as a relay node. Is that correct?
I don't think we went into that much technical detail. It was applied for emergency communications operations, which included a wide range of services for the sheriff's department.
I just think it's important to pin down what, what we're really needing this for exactly.
Yeah, and I have a question for you. This, this is the master link of all these, these towers on the top of the hill and going to Palos Verdes and all that. Does the guy sitting in a car get anything directly from this tower that does not go to another link? Unless he's in the civic center area. In other words, it's line of sight. The only thing you can see from the, from the tower is Pepperdine and the other hill.
Right.
And Castro Peak. So if somebody's in a car and they're not in that area, they're getting it from another antenna, correct?
Correct.
So this has absolutely nothing to do with changing the service to the individual car?
Well, it allows a deputy in this area of the coverage talk to his partner maybe out elsewhere, right? That's, that's what they do.
Through Castro Peak?
No, no, through, through this tower here. And this tower connects to the saddle peak and connects back to the sheriff's communication center and all comes together and, and rebroadcast everything back out.
Yeah, what I'm saying is it, it has to go to another tower unless you can see it from your car. And so. And so.
It has to see another tower through the microwave link.
All this has to do is hit Castro Peak or Palos Verdes.
It has to hear saddle peak.
Saddle peak. So, 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 um, why? This is a very simple question that I've been trying to figure out. You lowered one of the antennas ten feet. One of the, I mean, transmitters, ten feet, and you said the other one has to. Microwaves. The other one has to be, say, at ten feet higher because you can't see Palos Verdes.
The other one is the, under the microwave link that goes to Palos Verdes to, to do the microwave links.
Okay, so I'm wondering why? You can see the, the peak from standing on, standing on the ground, okay? Or ten feet up. So that's simple. Why does that have to be up at fifty-five feet or whatever it is?
The Palos Verdes goes to, the, the dish for Palos Verdes is at fifty-five feet.
Right, so why does the one that goes to cat to saddle peak have to be higher?
If a deputy's half a mile down the road that way with a radio on his hip and he's talking and a radio is ten feet off the ground, half a mile away, it won't connect.
I know, but that.
Up in the air.
But that is only, that's only the area in P, in Civic Center, which is a very small area. Okay? Everything else is blocked. So my question is, you have one at fifty-five feet and one ten feet higher or sixty-five, I can't remember, but you can see Palos Verdes at fifty-five feet. Why do you need the one to see Castro Peak or saddle peak? Why do you need that if you can see it from the ground?
I, I can answer that. Um, so in the process of doing calculations and designs for microwave paths, we have a software suite called Pathloss. Um, and in the process of designing those paths, we generate something that looks like this.
Yep.
So it's essentially a path. It's, it's basically a data sheet showing the elevations of the features between the two sites. Um, in the case of Malibu to Rolling Hills, like I said, there's a, a large amount of tree cover on the Malibu side facing Rolling Hills.
And that's at fifty-five feet.
So, so in this case specifically.
My direct question is, why is the other tower, other transmitter higher?
That'd be sixty-five.
When it has nothing blocking it.
So for saddle peak?
Yeah. Yeah.
Well, so saddle peak, if you look at the path data sheet here, you can see that there's a, um, essentially there's a sort of a butte or a hill that that's adjacent to. So it's a very close shot. I can bring this up if you want to.
No, well, I, I believe you. Uh, so close but no cigar is what you're saying?
There's shadowing from another mountain that's in between the two or blockage.
Well, so keep in mind too, so you have geographic features and then also you have clutter, which is our fancy way of saying trees or buildings. So.
So you're saying that the taller tower, the taller antenna is needed higher not because you can't see saddle peak or whatever peak it is from lower.
So it's, it's, it's a complicated discussion because you have to take into account how much data you want on the ban, on the, the path, the modulation of the radio, the frequency of operations. And so, for example, one hop is six gigahertz and one's eleven gigahertz and that changes all of your calculations. Uh, so again, the, the paths and the center lines of the antennas, they are determined by the requirements of the path and by the geography and tur, and trees and clutter and everything else.
I'll let Craig come back, but I have one last question. Do you ever use laser transmission?
No, we don't. Um.
Is there a reason why not?
Well, it could be intercepted.
A laser can't be intercepted. You break a laser and it's broken. That's why they use it in the military.
Well, we use microwave just because it's, it's standard industry practice. Um, AT&T, Verizon, T-Mobile, all of these other carriers, they use microwave point-to-point links because they're reliable and there's plenty of equipment on the market.
Craig, you're, you're back on.
Okay, one last question before we get to some comment later. I, I, I just, I'd like to understand that other alternatives have been explored and analyzed better. We've heard about other potential locations. We just heard something about height and how it needs to be a certain height. The Parker consultant says their, their take on the, the elevations were just that it was very reasonable. But I don't see the, like, the analysis and the evaluation. Did we look at others? Could, could we have done something, you know, on the other side of the, well, you, you don't want to go two hundred feet away from here, but it just seems like what, what, what other sites, what goes into your saying that this is the exact spot it needs to be on?
Basically, it's the microwave path, uh, that's critical. Um.
What if you had, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's kind of some back and forth here, right? What if you had a, a shorter tower that was just tall enough to, as Ryan Embry said, put something taller out by the fire station? Just to, like, a quick relay from the tall fire station to something, you know? Could you, could you do it with maybe two towers of half the height?
No, not really, because if you look at the, um, the other slide you had with the exposure, you look at the roof line of the, the building, right? It's at thirty-five feet. So your antenna has to be above that roof line, otherwise it's going to get blocked by the building.
But unless we have the taller tower by the fire station, which would be a direct line of sight to a tower, it could be ten feet high.
I'm not familiar enough with the, the path between this location to the fire station. Plus now we got to deal with putting something up at the fires. I don't know if you can even put a tower up at a fire station.
Right. But now, and so I guess maybe we've heard this already, but if the building's thirty-five feet, we're saying it, it, it couldn't just be forty or forty-five feet.
No, because it blocks.
That's still.
We have to separate antennas too, right?
Right.
We, we normally put auto receive antenna on the very top and then on the lower tier, then we put transmit antenna so they don't interfere with the receive antenna. So we, we do a separation, vertical separation.
Put it just as close to that corner of the building, but instead of on the west side of the building, kind of just wrapped around the backside such that the higher antenna could look over the top of the building to Rolling Hills and then the lower antenna, you know, whatever the separation is required, could look up to saddle peak or that, I guess that gets into the mountain issue.
That's backwards.
Yeah. All right. I, I'll reserve some, some comment for later.
Uh, Mr. Smith, Commissioner Smith.
I grew up in Hemet and we had this big dish that showed up in like nineteen sixty-five or sixty-six and it was the same thing that we're doing here. Um, it went up to Mountain Center for Idowild, right, for communication for the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Quite the thing. However, even in Hemet, they put the pole behind the building. My thing here is you're talking about undergrounding, you're talking about, you know, the difficulties of that. You've got, which most, some of the people in this audience that are listening, you've got two contractors up here that have done a lot of that work. That's not big work. To me, the first thing that, that didn't happen is you guys didn't come to us because you didn't have to. So now you're in a position of having to explain why the pole is there, why the radio room has to be here and the sheriff's units over on the other side. You didn't come to us to ask, what do we do about this? Do we flip-flop this? Can we put the pole in the back? Do we build a radio room inside next to the pole? And we underground and the power that you needed comes off the building? No big deal. The other thing is, this thing isn't even caged. Anybody can get in here and mess with it. The other thing is, you got open bolts. There's no safety wire even, not even that. And nobody even thought about maybe the kids that get in here start to loosen this? Anybody can walk in here and mess with this thing. Should have you to call Edison and get their five-sided bolt or nuts. They've got them. You don't have a wrench for that, just them.
Yeah.
So that, that's just me in construction. I'm saying that it's a shame that nobody came to us about where this should have gone in the first place. So it doesn't, doesn't matter who's out there to answer this. You just have to be standing there. We, we weren't asked. So to me, that's a problem. I know for a fact that this can get moved and it needs to be moved to the back part of the property or somewhere else. And you need to paint it the tan or the gray or whatever it is to hide it, even if it goes in the back. But to do the undergrounding work and getting the power to it and doing all that, I got to tell you, you guys need to come back and rethink this one because with that sitting where it is, because the radio room's on there, nobody thought about us. Now, there's a bunch of people out there listening to me say this and they can't believe their ears. I know that. So I'm, I'm, I'm saying you guys need to fix this and you need to, and it's has, anybody up here is not going to complain about you need, we need this? Yes, we need this. We, I don't care about the, you know, all that transfer of, you know, the wiring and all that stuff. I don't care about that. I just know that it can be made to work from another position on the property. And you guys need to do that. That, there's no question there. We need, we need it. Got to have it. That's great. Move it. Move it, paint it and let's, then you'll be on your way. But the next time, or if there is, I guess we don't have any other property with you guys, but you should have come and asked us because there's people here that could have helped you at least come up with some answers and not just throw it at us because you guys own the property and it doesn't matter what we think or say. Now you're up here against hearing what we say and it's, it doesn't look good.
I have a question.
John, can I add something specifically to that? I think the, the hardest thing for us in this role is the way that this sort of came maybe right now it's not shoved down because it's been sitting there for a handful of years. But our community went from an antenna that was a similar height, but it was located towards the rear of the property more to all of a sudden this big, new, crazily painted structure out of nowhere, right in the front of the building or what, what seems like it's in the face of everyone. And that's what's difficult because how could it have worked so well for so long, being maybe a similar height, but different location on the property? We're having the trouble understanding what the exact reason is for why it has to go here. How come we can have other structure that's over by the library that's essentially operating right now and working? Maybe that has nothing related to this. I'm not, don't know the specifics of that. But there was also, I think, I, I remember hearing talk of a, uh, some kind of a structure going at eighty-eight. Actually, I believe that the firemen there did not want at their station. Um, and then that was shelved. So I think that's the reason as to why nothing was done over there on the, another asset owned by the, by the, by the county. But hopefully, um, you know, that's, this is a really frustrating place to be in because I don't want this to seem like, uh, super, it's, it's super frustrating.
Right, right. And to address your comments regarding the, the city of Malibu not having input in the, the tower construction. It was in the original plans, um, back in two thousand sixteen when it was provided to the city of Malibu, the plans for the whole college campus project. And just like the entire project, we took the opportunity to raise awareness, to bring it up to the community, to bring it up to city council, to see if there were any revisions, if there was any comments for the plans and.
So the one comment on that is having sat on the city council at the time when that was approved, I do not recall seeing a drawing with a red and white antenna that was nearly ninety feet tall, sitting on the front side of the building. From, I was, might have even been mayor at the time, but I don't recall seeing that structure shown that way. I recall seeing an antenna there. It definitely was not painted white and red. And that is why, another reason as to why this thing has gotten blown out of control. Because I can probably sympathize with all of you that have spent so much time working on this. Why are these people making such a big deal out of it? There's been this back and forth between the county and the city over this. It's very frustrating because then the county said, hey, you have to paint it white and red or the FAA is ma, making us do that. And then we said, well, you got one at Lost Hills, but it's not painted red and white. Why, why are they allowed to do it there, but they're not allowed to do it here? So it's kind of gone like way blown out of proportion. But if you guys can say, the antenna has to go in this area. There's no other way to do it. That's one conversation. That's not what we're hearing. What we're hearing is it could go somewhere else. There's just a cost associated with that.
And there's an analysis that would need to perform if we were to move it somewhere else on the campus.
Let's, let's get some more questions answered so we can get some, some, uh, alternatives and, uh, I have a, I have a question of, uh, whoever's in charge of where, where antennas have to go. Is that you?
That would be Sheriff.
Sheriff. Okay, good. One of the big objections I've heard on this, on this tower is these three, I guess they're platforms that are sticking out the side and all the antennas hung around them. And there's a lot of drawings in here where there's pictures of, uh, antenna poles where the microwave big, big thing is just stuck on the side of the pole. What is the purpose of having to have these big triangular things?
To, to mount the antennas, to have the real estate to mount the antennas.
Okay, and, but I see, for example, the top antenna, there's one big antenna and, and a, and then there's some lightning rods and stuff. Why does that need a platform, for example? Or is this in the future, you say, gee, we want to put some more up, maybe?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's all, uh, anything we build, we got to be future-proofed too.
I know, but you have, there's all kinds of examples in here where you slap them on the side of it.
Not, not on, not on a pole. On, on a microwave dish, we could do that, but on those other antennas, we, we got to separate them too.
Well, you, you you have to separate them, but you can separate them by height also.
We separate them by high, we separate them by vertical and horizontal separation.
So the two microwave, the one that goes to Palos Verdes and the one that goes to the top of the mountain, those have to be separated. But they can be stuck on the side of the pole.
Take the same real estate.
Yeah, they, they can be stuck on the side of the pole. Why do the other ones have to be separated? How far? In other words.
They, they interact. You, you start changing antenna pattern that way. If, if you put the two antennas too close, antenna patterns start to change.
What I'm asking is you've got a platform and they're all within four feet of each other.
Right.
If you move them down four feet or up four feet, they're four feet from each other.
I, I can chime in on parapets. Um, so, so the reason for the parapets, another reason is, is that, so we have a, a county line crew that does maintenance and so that includes installing antennas, running hard lines, grounding components. So those parapets are for worker safety. Additionally, it, it eases, significantly eases and improves the safety of replacing components, including antennas.
So is there a ladder that goes up there? I don't see a ladder on the thing.
There is a cable with climbing pegs.
A what? A cable?
So there's, there's a steel cable that the, the climbers will connect their, their chest harness to as they're climbing. And they have climbing pegs that they use to climb the tower.
Oh, okay.
So keep, so.
Like telephone poles used to have.
Right, but keep in mind that the lower pegs are removed from the tower for safety reasons. So they may not be apparently visible.
I want to look to the future, okay? For six, six hundred bucks, you could go buy a Starlink and you can be in the middle of the Atlantic Ocean and talk to anybody in the world and watch Netflix. Where are satellites in all of this?
So the county uses satellites for specific deployments. The reason why we opt to use microwave for sheriffs, paramedics and fire is because we control that system. It's for, so we can maintain the integrity and redundancy of the system.
Okay, well, my, my question, while in the Ukraine, they got bombs landing on them and they use them, uh, that's, but, um, the way I'm looking at this is we have a diagram of the, it has to be line of sight.
Right.
And so we have these towers at the top of the mountains and they look down and they, they look down to the cop cars and send them the, the, the information.
Right.
But if there's anything in the way, if they're in a canyon, they get zip, okay? If they have a satellite, they get, they can, they can watch Netflix. As long as they can see the sky.
Correct.
So, so why don't you link to a satellite for the cars themselves? I can see transmitting to mass amount of data to, to.
I mean, you got to have a satellite dish on backup patrol car driving all over town too.
That would seem like it would be a lot cheaper than putting up this antenna and taking it and relocating it.
Well, I can see the antenna for mass tran, transmission of data and, and communications, but we're, we're here looking for safety, okay? I spent a month on a boat last year where I watched the little thingy follow it around. It's no different than a car. The antenna just follows the satellite on its own. Finds it, it keeps it on there. You watch movies. Uh, could I ask the sergeant?
Because.
You look like you have a comment.
Because, you know, one of the conditions I would make.
Can I chime in one, can I chime in one more thing about intended spacing and redundancy? Can I chime in one more thing about intended spacing and redundancy on this?
Sure.
I think I need to reiterate this because I don't think I made this clear. The tower needs to be in this position because if you move the tower, you will lose line of sight to Rolling Hills for sure, through the lower antenna. And Saddle Peak is also very narrow shot because of the hills that are adjacent to.
Well, you won't move it, move the height or something, but you move it 100 yards one way or other, you're still gonna see Palos Verdes.
That's not, no, that's not correct.
That is absolutely correct. There's, that is a flat plain, it's a flood plain.
So, for the path to Rolling Hills, we had our line crew visit the site in the course of planning these microwave links, and they brought a cherry picker with them, and they do line of sight verification for that path. So I'm just saying that it's, and it's worth reiterating, that if we move this monopole, you will lose connectivity.
You had a 65-foot cherry picker. That's a pretty big cherry picker.
Well, they verified, so again, if you move the position of the monopole, you're dealing with a different tree line.
No, I understand that, but it's a flat plain, whatever.
Chair?
Yes.
Can I ask a question? If, in the realm of things, if the city were to allow something like this to be located on an adjacent property that it owns that could provide you a better line of sight to the peak at the top of the mountain and/or Palos Verdes, would that be helpful?
It, that's a very complicated thing, the answer, because.
It is super complicated.
Because in the process of selecting sites, doing frequency coordination, which, you know, again, we have to reserve these frequencies from the FCC, they are licensed, so it's a whole process to get these, you know, approved. And of course, building the entire site, it would be, would it be technically feasible? Yes. Would it be advised? I don't think so, because the cost and the complications and everything else involved with that would be very, very large.
Cost prohibitive, okay, that's fine, thank you.
Craig?
Well, just, we were, yeah, right. We just had a little brief X party there, the thought was, Bluffs Park, we could put something much lower that because of its exposure would see Rolling Hills really well, see Saddle Peak really well, and again, the notion of that short antenna, and by the way, would also see up and down the coast there.
And the FCC.
And then you could have a shorter relay antenna back at the sheriff's station, so that too, that would give a good location for a two-pole concept.
Craig, I also would like to point out that the FCC has approved that location for antenna we've already put in.
For the Bluffs Park.
Bluffs Park.
Yeah, for Hans's antenna, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, all right, well, at some point, I'd like to kind of plow through some of my thoughts here.
Okay, I just, one other question. If a higher tech, if a higher technology comes along, for example, you guys talked to Musk and you get a Starlink, and this is no longer necessary, there's no reason why we can't condition it upon removal, correct? There's no equipment on there that doesn't have anything to do with transmission?
No equipment on there has to do with transmission?
Doesn't have to do with transmission.
In the event that the tower became obsolete for the uses of these purposes, would the county agree to remove it?
I believe, yes, that is a possibility, we'd have to analyze it. Right now, it's only for emergency communication purposes. If there was another technology that could provide the same service down the line, it's a possibility, but it's unknown at this time.
But with that said, that they've been using the same technology for 50, 60 years?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, Craig, you're on and we'll leave you alone for a while, you ask your questions.
Let me just plow through some stuff here, somebody can call me out at the end if I've gotten something wrong. Looks to me that, for the sake of what any of us are trying to do here in terms of like negotiating what can be done differently, et cetera, what are the parameters? The existing tower we have here is unlawfully installed because, Condition 17 of the Planning Commission Resolution Number 1630 states, quote, "Prior to construction of the replacement communications tower, property owner LA County shall obtain a conditional use permit for the emergency communications facility use." That never happened, thus, prior to construction, so the construction itself was unlawful, and so that kind of gives us license here, with all this talk that we're like trying to move things around, that we are starting from scratch. There is a sense that legally, there's a blank slate here. It's still not clear to me that all the reasons we want this would not be fulfilled just as well by a lattice-type view permeable tower. And, you're making a good argument that we needed the tower somewhere, somehow, but it strikes me that the, what I view as excessive mass and volume of this monopole concept is to support the possibility of the commercial broadband applications. And I look at that, I see at least 36 attachment points for facilities on there, you're talking about.
He said that they're not.
No, right.
They're not doing any of that.
Any wireless facility would require a separate conditional use permit, and we are not engaged with any wireless companies at this time.
Let me plow through this, because I, what I see is, I see documentation here that shows logos of Verizon, T-Mobile, a number of other facility companies that are just kind of waiting to be plugged into the diagram, those are in the documentation here. So, you know, if we were going to be doing something here, maybe we'd want to put in a condition that says, "It shall not be used for other commercial purposes."
I think it's for emergency services.
Well, but if that's all it were, then why do we have?
All of a sudden, if a cell phone's the only thing you use to communicate, then that becomes an emergency service.
Craig, we can put anything we want in, so we don't need to ask a question about that, we have.
This is not a question, I'm making, this is not a question.
Okay, well, ask questions and we'll make statements.
This is me making statements, all right? So I guess we've talked about, you talked about future-proofing, I think it is the way that it's going to end up being something like Starlink, or, Tyler, what do you?
Yeah, thanks, Chair Smith, or Commissioner Smith, sorry, respect for rotation. Just to be clear, and Bob Ross, I hope you're still on the line, to be, you know, quite honest with you, there may be some federal limitations against, if this gets established as a emergency, as a communications facility. So, we may be able to condition it, but there may be some federal preemptions that we need to be aware of.
Be clear.
Let me just ask a question on that of Mr. Ross. Is there any requirement of the FCC that you must lease your tower to anybody else?
Co-location requirements.
Co-location in regards to a non-emergency use?
Yeah, anything other than, say, we put a condition that said, "It may be used only by a government agency."
Well, this particular tower is for emergency use, which includes the federal government, not just the county, not just the city, includes the federal government.
I know, and our question is, can we preclude anybody else from using it?
Commercial applications.
Can we say, any government can use it through a license through whoever owns it, but nobody else?
Well, you have a situation because AT&amp;T provides emergency telecommunications services to the federal government.
From what I understand, that won't be the case in this tower.
It may not, it may not, but you can't, it may not be at this point, but, they do provide.
To clarify on this one, John, the zoning, the institutional zoning allows for accommodating public and quasi-public uses.
But that doesn't make any difference.
So in this formulation, the fact that AT&amp;T might be providing the functionality here becomes a quasi-public use.
But not for this tower, though, not for this one.
And Craig also.
But we're not, but.
We're not going by zoning, you can, you can.
We're going down a hypothetical that we just got the answer to, let's just move on to the next category.
I don't feel like I did get the answer.
Well, the answer to him was, look, you can't stop a federal agency if they're saying that that's used for.
And that's exactly my question.
Even if LA County Sheriff said, "I'm using Verizon for emergency communications," and they want to put a tower on there, you can't stop that.
But you're not, Tyler, you're not saying that the federal government can say, "Oh, hey, by the way, you've got this great new pole here, let's use that to hang the T-Mobile and the Verizon and all the 5G stuff." The federal government can't just come and say that, right?
Let's put it this way, we can put a condition in and we will wait to get sued, because.
And my point in, at the outset is that if you didn't need that extra capacity, and somebody just, one of you guys just said, "Well, we need to future-proof it," and to me, the future-proof is going to be the Starlink or some other, something, well, we won't need the tower probably at all.
Craig, I'm missing your point, what's your point? If we say.
My point is, if we, if it's only for the emergency purposes.
Yes.
It doesn't need to have this robust with the platforms and the monopole, it could be a nice new version of the same lattice, trellis.
No, no.
They need all that stuff, because that's for the guys to work, that's a safety issue, it makes the whole process a lot safer. We don't want to see a cherry picker out there all the time, and we're going to get more complaints about that.
Every spot on this tower is reserved for county emergency purposes, not for any commercial use at all.
But if we have a view permeability thing, you know, it would be, the other one disappeared more visually.
What's the chance of losing the top tier? Now that you've relocated that top microwave antenna down to the lower part and on the column, could that top part of this Christmas tree get a little smaller? Yes or no?
No, because, like I said earlier, we have to separate the antennas.
Okay.
To avoid interference.
Okay, to continue forward on the height variance, to be clear, we're talking about 59 feet in excess of what the city allows, the 28-foot height thing, and we as a commission have just been sort of chastened by a four-to-one council for granting an excessive variance on something else that was retaining while it was high. But here, it seems like you're asking for, in effect, a kind of grandfathering by saying, what? After the fact, by saying, "Well, there was this old tower that was there before, and so we can kind of go that high," and despite the 28-foot height limit. And my problem with that sort of grandfathering or quasi-grandfathering argument is, it's not the same, it's not the same form factor, it's got all this extra build-out, that it just seems like that.
It's more intensified use.
It's a more intensified use, so I'm not comfortable with that. And in the end, it seems to me, if the height and the line of sight issues are problematical for the good communication, could you not install equipment that is just somewhat higher-powered? That's going to get, like, you know, and I'll draw the analogy to my neighborhood with the family radio service stuff we have. You can't get over the next hill if you have like, you know, the one that costs 25 bucks or whatever, but if you have the one with a little more power that's 50 bucks, you can get around the hill, you know? Could we, could we have lower towers with a little bit more power and solve the line of sight?
I can answer that. So, just a little technical information, so, the micro antennas, they typically operate around 37 dBm, which is equivalent to five watts. They're very low-power. They're very directional, so it's not a matter of increasing the power, because it's all about line of sight.
So, on the, the question was the very top platform.
Yeah.
If we can shrink it, maybe we can take a look at shrinking that, but not lowering, if we shrink it, would that, would that help?
Yes, that would help.
Any reduction would help.
All right, so.
Skyler, let's get recognized. Are you finished with your question?
Well, and I just think that, you know, for a variance, one of the things that you have to show is that you're not, we're not giving you a special privilege. And here, it does seem like it is a special privilege, because everywhere else we see these lattice trellis-type towers that are view permeable, like at Lost Hills, and somebody else showed another photo of one. And so, going with this fancy monopole structure seems like, it's hard to justify if there was a way to do it that's.
I want to ask a question. If they never built a college, would they still be able to see Castro Peak from the old one, or whatever, Saddle Peak?
Saddle Peak?
Yeah.
If they never built a college?
If you, if, you built the pole basically because the college was being built.
Well, we had to remove the old tower to build the college, right?
Yeah, I know, but if the college was never built and the old tower was there.
Yeah.
Did it work?
Well, it no longer meets today's requirement, because the tower's implemented so long ago, at some point in time, it's out of the today's requirement.
Now, all the other towers you have, are they up to par?
We are upgrading, well, from, for the county's, for the ALRIC system, we upgrade all towers, county-wide.
You have upgraded them all?
We, for the ALRIC system, we upgrade it all.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Craig. No, wait, no, let's, let Craig finish.
I can pass to somebody else.
Okay, you're on.
Want to talk about college or something?
I do kind of agree with Commissioner Smith's comments in regards to how we got to this point. As I said, it seems like us being free-wheeling, spending taxpayers' money to fix this, is not what we're really here to do tonight. We were given options in regards to changing the colors, seeing if there's some ways to modify it. We've, it seems, sounds like we almost got something in regards to making it a little thinner right now, but I think we should try to get it into a direction of what we're going with this.
Well, I disagree with you. I mean, the county went and built something and spent money on it without permission, okay? And, that's not our problem. So if everybody, if I went out and built a 30,000-square-foot house, and you say, gee, the guy spent the money, make it 20, he's got to tear it down, okay? That's the way the world works. So I think what we're really here for is to see what the alternatives are. We got a much bigger thing than we thought we would. I have never seen one anywhere in the county that looked like that. They say they're redoing them all, I've been up to Castro Peak, they all look like this, like the old ones. I don't see any monopoles with three piers on them and all this kind of stuff. So I think, I think what we really need to do is, we need an alternatives analysis done and come back to us. And if the alternative is, there is no alternative, that's fine, but as far as I'm concerned, there has been no alternative for a different location, that location was picked because they were building a college. I'll call on you next. And, it is there in that exact point, that exact space, because that's where it was 20 feet from the old one.
How long will it take for you guys to do another analysis?
Or to do a first analysis?
For analysis.
Now, which particular issue?
Well, basically, I think it would have to cover, a cost analysis of, say, for example, putting it behind the building instead of right out front, or next to the helicopter pad, or whatever. Now, I would have to call up the sheriff again, but every, I've been here 50 years, and Skyler's close, you know? I've never seen a helicopter in an emergency land anywhere other than the Pepperdine grass lawn. I mean, I just, that's where they all go. So, the necessity of being next to the helicopter pad, I don't know, but you say you can't bend a wire this way or that way. What we get, what we're getting an objection of here is, this is supposed to be a rural town, and all of a sudden, we've got the Brooklyn Bridge painted orange, right in the middle of it. And, I don't think we necessarily want it on, I think the only analysis was done was, this is where it's going to be, what do we do? Because you didn't have another location. But then we go see this pole over by the library, there's county land there, there's ways to make this less ugly, there's ways to make this less up front. I'm not saying, let's move it to top of, you know, Sarah Retreat or something, but my problem is, I don't see this as a safety issue at all. I know when I'm, you're down in that canyon, that cop car is not going to get transmission, period. Everybody in Malibu knows that, it's line of sight, you told us it's line of sight. So this is about your network and a local area. So this is about your, your network and a local area. And local area is less than a mile.
So when you're talking about alternatives, you're talking about citing alternatives, right?
Citing alternatives and visual alternatives.
And materials.
And this thing is bolted down, and if you come back to us and say, gee, this is absolutely the only place we can see the, the, the mountain. I, I, that's a flat plain, I, you know, I, I'm not, I'm not a sucker, okay? It's just like, and unfortunately, with the county, we've had a problem, okay? You were on the city council, I got up there and said, how do we give a variance to the tallest building in Malibu? And they said, it's a school, let them do whatever they want, okay? It's called a rubber stamp. And we got in trouble because we rubber stamped, and, and nobody looked, and, so we want to do a right this thing.
Do, we're seeing challenges with this. Do we want to send this back and say, we want color alternatives showing the rendering of the color with the background? And showing the top tower smaller, which they said that they may be able to do, and then showing a different location? Rebecca, I see you. Sorry.
Rebecca, yes, please.
Our consultant, Robert Ross, has his hand raised for comment.
Okay, we'd like to hear from him.
While we're waiting. I just want to say, while we're waiting, that, the, the reason we're here really is that when the college came through and the planning commission all looked at it, the tower was like an afterthought. It was like an asterisk and a footnote, and I think whoever was on there, that wasn't even on the radar, and suddenly, it's like, oh, hang on, this is a big, literally standalone, separate, big thing, and so it never got the review.
Okay, but let's hear, Mr. Ross, are you there?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, what would you like to tell us?
There's a, there's a couple things that may assist you a little bit. First and most important, there's a, a section in the city ordinance called ANSI-FCO Public Safety Guide for Site Hardening Requirements. It's called ANSI-FCO two-dash-one-oh-six-dash-one-dash-twenty-nineteen. It's part of the city ordinance. It says that any quote-unquote "emergency communications" is to be hardened. This new site is what they call a hardened site. That tower is what is considered a maximum, maximally hardened for the, for your location, i.e. fire, floods, earthquakes, everything, tsunamis, the whole thing. That's why that particular type of tower was chosen. The other thing is, is that a tower went in as a class, is an FAA Class Zero, which is under a hundred and fifty feet, and that's the color. They're just required by a Class Zero, and the lighting was so designated. Now, the FCC local representative can grant a waiver, which they have, and they didn't get the waiver to start with. So when you start saying a lattice, I don't know whether a lattice tower, without going through all of the ramifications of moving, a hardened site would, would actually be capable of, of use for quote-unquote "a new hardened site" under the current city ordinance.
Okay, the city ordinance is, this isn't following the city ordinance to begin with. So, but let me ask you this. If it's a hardened site, and I can go in there with a, with a socket wrench and disconnect all the electric to it, it's not real hardened, is it? It shouldn't, if it's hardened, shouldn't it be walled off somehow, so you can't have people messing with it?
Are you directing that to our consultant?
Yes, I am.
And Robert, I've unmuted you, if you're able to contribute to that.
Well, neither did I, but yeah.
Robert, you should be unmuted.
Okay, once it, yes, sir, once it becomes operational and it's been inspected.
So.
Yes, that's one of, uh, Bob Ross's recommendations as well, was to fence off the site from access. So, in our report, we mentioned, if you were to approve, we would, we would recommend you adopt those conditions.
Well, it's my understanding the site has power and it is transmitting, so is it operational?
No, the, the, it's not operational at this time, not at all.
So where's, where's the link to Saddle Peak coming from? We don't have one?
Currently, they're coming from the courthouse on top, or.
Oh, okay, so that's operational.
That's operational, but that's at thirty-five feet, thirty, twenty-five to thirty feet.
Okay, and you're already hooked up with all your, your control room and all that kind of stuff there?
It, it's all temporary, and like Sheriff mentioned, right now, they still lose signal. It's not clear at all.
Okay, that's another question I would ask on a, on a.
No, there's no full complement of the equipment there right now. It's just very, very minimal, just to keep the sheriff communication going.
So that was.
It doesn't support a station operation at all, doesn't support a disaster communication system at all. It's just one function, one small function, but it's support a critical.
So that was put in when this, the other one was taken down?
When, when, yeah, when the old tower got removed, this thing got moved over temporarily until this new tower is put in, then.
So we couldn't, an option would be to add twenty feet to that tower?
Well.
Or whatever it is.
I, I don't think you can just add stuff.
Well, I don't mean add, but, you know, put it where that is.
Yeah.
It can see everything, correct?
I'm not sure exactly what you mean by adding.
Well, I'm saying, that location can see Palos Verdes and Saddle Peak.
At the Kern Tower location?
Yes.
Yes, at the Kern Tower.
Okay, and that isn't seven, eighty feet tall?
No, at the courthouse.
The courthouse?
Oh, at the courthouse, no. At the courthouse, I, I think you can only see the Saddle Peak.
So there, and then Saddle Peak transmits to Palos Verdes?
No, no.
So Palos Verdes doesn't get anything from us?
Not, not through this way, there, there are other ways, but this, this, Rolling Hills, Palos Verdes is alternative link, in case a Saddle Peak lane goes down, it automatically reroutes the traffic.
It's your backup.
Yeah, it's a redundancy.
Okay, now, is, is there a backup now?
There's no backup now.
No, they're just built, they want to add the backup.
We want to, we want to make a public safety grade, everything is redundant.
Okay.
Where possible.
And there's no other place to put a backup?
Correct.
You can't have a backup on one of the other towers on the top of the mountain? Then they can see Palos Verdes, or Rolling Hills Estates. There, there's five of them, right? Not Saddle Peak, the next one down the line?
No, not.
Or the next one towards the city.
Yeah.
John, the, the issue is that if they have a problem with the tower up on the top of the mountain, they want to be able to get a signal from the Pal, from Rolling Hills Estates to Malibu. If they lose the functionality of the towers.
Not the other way around, okay?
Correct.
Okay, I would propose that we make a motion to continue this item for a reevaluation of how to mitigate the tower, either location or look. For example, can you, can you eliminate any of the platforms by attaching the microwave two to the pole itself, which is, I see in a lot of these diagrams and pictures? Or any other solutions you have? Can you make it look like a Christmas tree? I don't know.
Or, or do less future-proofing based on the fact that, that satellite may be the next generation?
Sure. Just a second, I got two people talking to me. Drew?
I have a question for the applicant.
Go ahead.
Which would you prefer? Us to vote on a motion to continue this and send you back to the drawing board, or denial and have appeal to the city council?
I, I think we'd like to discuss that before.
Yeah, well, I, I don't, I don't think, my alternative is not send you back to the drawing board. My alternative is to get some answers here. You drive around LA and you don't see these things, okay? And why this one is so obtrusive, why everybody in town is going bananas, can there be something done to change that? And that's not going back to the drawing boards. That's merely, guys that design towers, can, can they solve problems like that? Can they get rid of platforms? Can they move, move antennas around?
Right.
Et cetera, et cetera.
Right, I think.
And does it absolutely have to be exactly that height? That's what I'm talking about.
This is my, my personal perspective on this is, your fastest path would be to accept a denial from us, at the, you know, the way this is going.
And I will give you my, my personal perspective, then I'll get yours. We just spent a long time, and, and we spent a long time here in the city council, rubber-stamped the last one, and that's how we got here. And they're going to rubber stamp the next one. And if we could present the city council with something that was better for the public, with just a little tweak, a month of, I don't know how long you guys take, but a, a month of sitting down with people who design towers and understand the situation we're in, we can satisfy the public and, and make some changes that aren't so ugly.
Right, well, we'll take the continuance, right? And part of the analysis, we'll look at the City of Malibu lot adjacent, see if that's also a possibility.
Yes.
So, I would like to make a motion to continue this item, pending a, another hearing, where we will ask you, as the applicant, to come up with alternative location and height and design. And what I mean by height and design, design, I mean color and aesthetic, and also the size of that top tier, or even those other smaller, sort of, levels of the tower that could potentially be smaller. I think, heard that there's a possibility that the top one could be smaller, and to look at the height and location of those on this property, and/or to communicate with staff. Obviously, if it were to go on a parcel of the city's property, there would have to be, that's not a decision that this board could make. That board, that would have to come through the council, but maybe, but maybe that conversation never even happened, right? Maybe, maybe.
That's a long road.
It, it could be a long road, but it might be a better road. It might be a smarter road for our community to not have a eighty, ninety-foot-tall structure there. We might be able to get away with thirty-foot-tall structure. Maybe that's not possible. Maybe it would still have to be fifty or sixty feet, and it's just not worth the cost associated with that.
I will second that and ask you, what do you want, two months, one month, three months? What is, now, and the reason I'm, I'm trying to get that is so we can set a date soon, but also, I'm looking at the fact that this is not being used, right? And the sheriff is not going to move in there this year. The city's already announced that, okay? They put out a press release on it, so you, you give us what you think would be a reasonable time to come back.
They need it for transmission now. They're using it now. They'll be using it now.
They don't have clearance to use it?
No, I'm saying, Sergeant Southern says that.
Okay, but, but my question is, that's, that's no, no talking. We're, I have any question, I need an answer. We have a motion on the table. So, what do you think? What would you like?
At the minimum, we need at least three months.
Okay, and can you give us a, and we can always continue that if you can't make it, okay? Can you give us a date three months from now?
Tyler, register.
Tyler?
I was just going to say, it might be best to just do a date uncertain, we can always renotice.
Well, then you got to renotice it, right?
We do, but, I mean.
If you do that, then it gives the applicant the ability to say they're ready to come in.
Okay, then you're, will you amend your motion to a date uncertain, or you never had a date, so?
It's up to you guys, I was just saying, I mean, if it's that far out, we can always renotice.
It's fine to go to a date uncertain.
Okay, so I'm seconding Skyler's motion. Is there any other motions or discussions?
Quick comment. One, the, the application wasn't for a relay tower, it was for, expressly for the sheriff's station, so that, that's part of that flexibility. Two, the installation was unlawful, so that is what's giving us the flexibility. Three, just on the color thing, this is a really tiny thing, but we saw some renderings. Somebody said, make it tan like the building, that seemed sort of brightly colored, and it's worse, yeah, and then the gray, that was like battleship gray, that was kind of somber. I sort of thought like, we're all about rustic, yada, yada, maybe it could be like sage gray or something.
Well, no, this is up to you to make us happy.
Right.
You can give us ten colors if you want.
Right, it was part of our analysis.
No purple, no yellow, you know?
No stripes.
We are earth tones out here.
Right.
Okay, okay, can we, can we call a motion? Any other discussion? Okay, Rebecca.
As a point of clarification, could you confirm that the motion is to continue the item to a date uncertain for the applicant to provide alternative locations, height and design, including potential reductions in the mass of the upper portion of the tower?
Anesthetics.
Anesthetics.
But I think design covers the aesthetics.
Well, whatever, they know what we're talking about. Tyler knows what we're talking about.
Height, design, location.
It's pretty loose, so, that's, you have it correct. Okay, can we call, call a question?
Yes. Commissioner Peak?
Yes.
Chair Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Hill?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
You bet.
Vice Chair Leonard?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn? Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Have a great day.